All right, welcome everyone to the meeting. Call this evening to order. Thanks to all the commissioners for taking time today, all the staff here as well. And I'm just gonna go ahead and turn it over to Avril to go over the agenda and kick us off.
Thank you, Commissioner. And thanks, everyone, for being here to begin our planning for fiscal year 2022. We have a full agenda today, so we want to give a brief recap of last fiscal year 2020 year results that will move quickly into a current year fiscal year 2021 overview. We'll also take a forward look at the economic and financial outlook. This financial outlook that you'll see today begins our effort to start with that multi-year budgeting and multi-year projections and impacts. For the past two fiscal years, questions around educational funding and how those funds are allocated have come up. We plan to cover the way that we can allocate K-12 funding and what's allowed by statute. Also recently, off-cycle funding for schools requests has come up. Budget staff worked with Buckham County Schools, and we have an idea and an option that we'd like to present to you and get your feedback on as well throughout the day. As you know, next year 2021 is a reappraisal year. We have our tax appraiser Keith Miller here, and he would talk a little bit about where we are given update on the rebound. But majority of today, we want to spend our strategic priorities and ranking and a board discussion around our strategic priorities. My goal with that section is to receive guidance from the board on your budget priorities, and that will help us drive any expansion funding that we have. We will wrap up today with Kit Timlow introducing to you a legislative agenda process. This process is an idea where we can establish a set of priorities that we view as critical to meeting the vision of Buckham County. We would like to get your input on this process and whether or not you want us to move forward with a full development of the strategic legislative agenda process. Before we begin, I do want to draw your attention to the inside cover of your binders. As mentioned, you will see their response as an informal report to the board for off-cycle budget requests. You'll also see strategic highlights. They're organized by focus area. This is just a sampling of projects that staff has accomplished over the past fiscal year. To me, it was impressive and inspiring for what was accomplished, even though we were in the midst of responding to a global pandemic. So I wanted to make sure you have a takeaway with you on that. On your table, you'll also see a copy of our adopted strategic plan that may be helpful to you as we talk about strategic rankings and priorities later today. And now we'll start our agenda. I'll turn it over to Don Warren, our finance director, to give you a review of fiscal year 2020 results. And then Don will turn it over to the budget team that will go through the rest of the agenda today.
Hi, everyone. So I'm gonna give you a quick update. This is the information that I presented in October to the board on the fourth quarter, where we ended the year. So general fund and solid waste of the two topics, I'll go over real quick. Yeah, I used to back my head. Okay, so the year ending June 30, 2020, total budgeted revenues, 393,466,352. Budget revenues excluding appropriated fund balance was actually 378,674,048. And actual revenues, excuse me, were 379,570 and $22. That put us at 102% over the budget. You can see the difference. Categories, add val, local option restricted, see how they varied from budget to actual. On the expenditure side, we had a budget of 393,466,352. And the actuals were 376,856,604. So we were 95.8% under budget. And you see the difference categories, General Government, Local Option, Restricted, see how they fare throughout the year. And these are at the functional level, and this is how we budget. We look at the categories, salaries and benefits, operating program, you can see how each of those categories are, we'll budget them, their data and priority.
I would just speed up a little bit. It's a little hard to hear because of the heater over here. Carter, thank you very much.
I will project more. Is that better? This is the fund balance as of June 30. So for fund balance, we had $72 million at the end of the year. That's 22.4% of expenditures and transfers. Our minimum fund balance policy is 15%, which would have been the $48 million. And then we have available fund balance after policy requirements was $22 million. Now, we appropriated $14.7 million for this fiscal year 21 budget. So there's a remaining available fund balance of $9 million sitting out there. Is there any questions on the fund balance piece? This is the first time most of you have seen that piece. Parker and Ter, I'm Ter, Ter, I cannot remember your name. Sorry. I've seen this information at your location. Solid waste, they have a $10.2 million budget. Actual year date was 11/4. So if you take appropriate fund balance, they're 118.7% on the revenue side. Sales and services, you can see, extremely well. Landfill and the transfer station, transfer station is really doing well since this term online. On the expenditure side, we have salaries, operating expenditures, you did really well, came in at 84.5% of the $10.2 million budget. Just wanted to give you a quick overview of that. If there's any specific questions on any of the categories, I think I'm happy to answer that. Otherwise, I would turn it over to budget to kick it off. All right.
So having heard how we finished up fiscal year 20, and before we discuss fiscal year 22 and beyond, I did want to spend a minute just reviewing where we are with fiscal year 2021. So what was an adopted budget for 21? What is our amended budget for 21? And the budget amount shared today will be through November 30th period, so as of December 1st. So the current amended budget for fiscal year 21 is $342 million. The budgeted revenues are $327.1 million with a $14.9 million appropriated fund balance. Our general fund is balanced. It's achieved by the $327.1 million in the projected revenues with the addition of the $14.9 million of appropriated fund balance. Depicted here is that our expenditures exceed projected revenues by $14.9 million. Therefore, savings could potentially need to be used to cover expenditures over and above revenues. Rusty is going to provide you with information later when we review the financial outlook as to what it means to be structurally balanced. Comparing adopted and amended budgets for both fiscal year 20 and 21, our adopted fiscal year 21 budget was $336.5 million compared to fiscal year 20 adopted of $334.5 million, a 0.6% increase over fiscal year 20. Budget activity over the course of the year increases the amended budget. The fiscal year 21 amended budget after activity since July 1 is $342 million. The year-to-year budget comparison is relatively flat. So let's review our expenditure budget. Again, the amended budget is $342 million, and the breakdown by function is reflected here in this table and chart. You heard Don speak to that we adopt the budget by function or expenditures. The top three areas of spending for the general fund are education, human services, and public safety. Those three functions comprise 73% of our overall general fund budget. And public safety at 20%. Following the budget overview today, I will turn the presentation over to Sam Riddle for a conversation with you around the K through 12 education funding. Again, you heard County Manager Avril Pender mention that there's been questions over the last few fiscal cycles from the board. We want to make sure that we are digging into education funding to a larger extent today. Just a quick reminder, when we talk about functions, while this list may not be exhaustive, just wanted to point out a few of the areas or categories that fall within these functions so that we're mindful of those as we talk about the budget. You can see that education function comprises of funding in supporting tech, Ashland City Schools, Buckham County Schools, and early childhood education funding. When you think about human services, it's our animal services, our public health and social services. And public safety is our emergency services, 911, our justice services, and then the sheriff and detention centers. And then general government, what you generally think of for a general overall government, budget, finance, HR, taxes as a sort of general government. And then debt, basically supports all of the debt service payments. We make those capital projects. Economic and physical development, our planning for residential inspection, toll fund, cultural and recreational, recreation services and libraries. And then other financing sources is comprised, that's where we establish monies in the general fund that transfer out in support of affordable housing, our pay-go-capital projects, observation easements, and subsidy for our transportation. Any questions about that? So the table here shows a comparison for fiscal year 20 actuals, fiscal year 21 adopted and amended budgets. Just a quick recap again, other financing sources and uses are the inter-fund transfers for the affordable housing, transportation, conservation, pay-go-capital, bring-backs. The fiscal year 20 is higher in comparison as the final amount of that transfer takes account budgetary activity throughout the year. And we did do a transfer of $850,000 from the general fund to the capital fund for the facilities assessment. So that's why you'd see that higher in 20. Comparing the 21 adopted to the amended, the primary driver of the budget increase since adoption are the result of additional federal cares funding and supportive expenses for public health, community testing sites, the contact tracing, staffing, supplies, and mitigation strategies. And then another driver of that was the $2.6 million of a budget carry forward. And just for our new folks, Akonor, just to tell you what a budget carry forward is, so on an annual basis, we're generally going to bring forward a carry forward request. So there were things that happened, didn't happen, in the prior fiscal year that we aren't able to pay for just based on the timing, the delivery of goods and services. So in the new fiscal year, we request a budget carry forward for our departments to be able to accomplish those things with the budget that was originally intended. So that's what I'm trying to explain a carry forward. Any questions? Let's talk about revenues. The total budget revenues are also $342 million. We talked about the makeup of the projected revenues of $327.1, $14.9 of appropriated fund balance. The revenue budget is adopted by major revenue category. The largest portion of revenues comes from property tax, representing 65% of the adopted budget. Intergovernmental revenue comprises 14% of the revenue budget. That's primarily health and human services, state and federal funding. Federal cares funding shows up here for departments that would have received it and it would have posted to the general fund for use. Local option sales tax represents 9% of the budget. And then just to go through a little bit, as a reminder of what makes, like, what are some examples of some of these other categories? Sales and services, it's collected across the organization and can be anywhere from ambulance billing, fingerprint fees, rental income, library fees. Those are examples. Permits and fees is generally generated from the building-related permits and inspection fees, as well as the register of deeds recording fees. Other taxes and licenses is made up of rental car and heavy equipment tax, our deed stamp tax, our property transfer costs, and video programming taxes. Other revenue includes investment earnings and transfers from other funds to the general fund. Any questions?
I'm curious, you know, off the top of your head, the amount of rental car revenue that we're talking to the back end of.
When they came out of, when the state home order got lifted.
When it got lifted, it started. When it got lifted, okay.
Thank you. All right, am I going the wrong direction? So this table shows a comparison of fiscal year 20 actual revenues received and the 21 adopted and amended budgets. Revenue changes since adoption will be the corresponding revenue increases for the care spending and the appropriation of the fund balance for that budget carry forward. There's anything else that stands out for you? Pretty consistent. I'll look at our five-year property tax rate history.
In terms of the sales tax, what's the, maybe, or, what's the current thinking in terms of, like, this year's forecast on sales tax?
Rusty's definitely going to address sales tax instantly. So for the five-year tax rate history, you can see from '27 to '28, there was a decrease of 6.5 cents. That was a result of reappraisal in '27, and then the resulted revenue impact for '28. We had another penny decrease from '28 to '29, and then we remained flat at 52.9 for $100 of value over the last three consecutive years. The total property tax revenue is $212.2 million. This amount includes the current year admiral, as well as budgeted interest, arrears, and prior year collection amounts. Yes.
At some point, can we get a comparison to the other metro counties in terms of property tax rates? That's a data point we've seen in years past.
You know, can I just kind of make one observation on that? Often times, look at those numbers to kind of get a sense for how we compare. It's, you know, it's complicated, I think, partly because, because you can just look at the rates, right? That's a simple number, 52.9, other places are higher or lower. But part of the thing to kind of, you almost need to adjust for is the fact that, like, real estate here is expensive, right? So like, you might look at some other counties and think, oh, our rates are lower than theirs. You know, these other cities and counties have higher tax rates. But then you think about, like, what a house, what you can pay for a similar house in Greensboro, and it might cost half as much. So it's, it's not as simple as just comparing the numbers, right? In terms of how it feels to the taxpayers.
Maybe, maybe there's a tool through which we could have the right metrics to really understand how the, how those pieces add up to, so we could do some kind of comparison just to.
Yeah, maybe it's, maybe it's like looking at the rates, but then if there's some way to just kind of like, like, for average citizens in different counties, how much do they actually pay? It's like a key number that we need to go.
Yeah, that's a good point. I would say that. Us, if we don't have the tax assessment, we can definitely see. Come back to you some better. Great, thank you. All right, so before I, I was looking, scanning the room for Sam, we may need to jump ahead to the next piece on the education funding. Sam's got some things that were already planned.
He's on the way, though. He's on the way.
Okay, excellent. But I do want to go ahead and ask that we review the memo that is in the front of your binder. You all have made the request of staff to come back with a recommendation on a process for the approval for school projects that have a community connection and impact and that aligns with or is included in the annual budget. So following that request, Buckham County budget staff met with Buckham County Schools' central office staff in late October. We wanted to review and gather information on existing capital processes that exist for Buckham County Schools. We wanted to understand the full scope and categorization of the capital needs that are requested, funding streams that are available, and then current funding gaps that may be leading to these off-cycle requests. Buckham County Schools obviously implements a very thorough annual budget process. They have a capital projects committee, much like we do, composed of school stakeholders, and recommended projects are matched with the available funding streams and prioritized with that committee. The reality is, is that there are many more projects that can be funded, we know that. The items that the school system has identified as not generally eligible for funding through their current capital project process and funding streams are, we identify with them these three categories. So new or replacement playgrounds for any school. It indicated that unless there's an AVA compliance or safety regulation that must be addressed, they generally aren't able to fund or don't fund and support playgrounds. Enhancements over base standard for athletics and band. Currently, each middle and high school receives an annual allotment for athletic and band-related purchases. These purchases then also have to have prior approval through their central office. It's like a set amount for each of those middle and high schools. And then extracurricular projects connected to career technical education and other associations for student organizations. So the general guidance that the individual schools from Buckham County receive regarding these types of requests is that if it's an enhancement over and above the BCS-provided or required minimum standard fixtures, infrastructure, et cetera, that these should be funded through an alternative source. That alternative source, as we've seen, is typically a 501(c)(3) that's affiliated with their student organization and/or is accomplished through fundraising, grants, donations, so PTOs for playgrounds, or booster clubs for the school athletics, band, and organizations like the Future Barbers of America. The school system's decision to establish guidance as outlined above for these requests is to diminish inequitable funding from, from the school resources across this district. That was very important when we had that conversation, was that whatever process that we might propose, we want to ensure that we are not increasing or potentially creating additional inequities across this district. So out of this, our recommendation is that any funding that the board wishes to allocate outside of already allocated local current expense or capital funding, that they defer categories outlined in Section 2, and should be made known, so that an amount known during the annual budget process, and in consideration of the following points. We believe that a plan should incorporate selection criteria to align with the strategic, the county's strategic planning goals, and that if possible, the approval process of specifically funded projects, leverage oversight bodies for prioritization and recommendation. We did talk about one possibility with Buckham County Schools. If this is the board's desire to move forward with, we could replicate and have a conversation with Ashland City Schools about how that works. All construction that occurs on a school property must adhere to established codes and regulations. So the BCS physical facility staff need to be aware of these requests prior to recommendation and award. And then for timing, Buckham County Schools' perspective is that it would be helpful that the application and the award notification process should be in advance of their school capital process, because if they are aware and they could look for potential ways to augment or supplement that project, they would like to also do that in consideration of their existing capital. So that is kind of the pieces that we have reviewed with Buckham County Schools. Again, this was a starting point. If the board has a desire to move forward with a, you know, a specific dollar amount or allotment, we can come back with a more specific plan, and we definitely want to follow the Ashland City Schools.
I have a couple of questions. So in terms of the playgrounds, so it says that, that they're generally not eligible for funding through the current capital projects if they are new or, or replacement playgrounds for schools, unless there's an ADA compliance or safety regulation. So, so like, when a new school is built and there's a playground that's needed for it, those are privately fundraised?
We're streaming lights, if we get the dead hours, we'll pick it up on the mic. Normally through PPSO, it's easy way.
Okay. So, so the only time that money can be spent on a playground from the school's fund is if, like, some equipment is broken and it's dangerous, that you could go in and fix it. But it has to be something like that. It has to be there's sort of a safety issue or an ADA issue to trigger, and we need to step in, and we just can't let that be that way. But other than that, it's really kind of a PTO-type, like, all the playgrounds and stuff, that's basically.
We've got, we've got certainly a variance in ages of the playground, so I can't historically tell you that and then what I understand.
Yeah.
That is certainly, we might have to do that.
And, and I guess the follow-up question is, so the memo says that they're not eligible for funding from the county schools. And is that for, is that for a legal reason? Is that a, is there a legal reason that state funding or our funding can't be used for that? Or is it then just more of kind of a, kind of a philosophical issue of, hey, you know, there's so many funding needs to the schools, let's let, you know, let's let the PTOs and other community fundraising efforts handle that? Is it more like that, or are there actually legal reasons that, you know, the state should say, let's, let's appropriate estimate and do more in that area?
From my standpoint, for that, lack of merit or that equity issue, and then prior schools have gone through that avenue of going through a community fundraising, PPSO to construct their playgrounds. So for us to shift that to the now funds immediately become available, I think in fairness with the previously where we've gone, at that place, that's where I see it playing, doing more than.
So, so, so that, I, that makes sense. Although, just from an equity standpoint, doesn't that also put, you know, schools with, that have less affluent demographics at a disadvantage, you know, from an equity standpoint, like, you know, you have a playground that your, the demographics of your school can support. Some, you know, some are better positioned to do that than others.
Some questions, are they better positioned? Some questions are in better position than others than all the locations. And I think in those cases, we should all work together to make sure that they're working towards a specific access. One of the most recent ones, I think, was in Black Maberry Primary. And that was a grant, a huge grant that was, uh, to put in place and also that's true for Oakley Elementary. So there's avenues that, that schools can seek out for that type of funding for the rest of the equity. But it's based upon the location of the particular school.
So I have a question for both. I'm really curious how your school foundations are part of your budgeting process. Because it seems like that is definitely a way to help with the equities within each of the schools and the PTOs that may have additional resources. And I'm just coming at it from my perspective that, you know, as the foundation of ADT had highly involved in that process to help determine where budget, budgetary gaps are. Um, that dollars can be raised philanthropically. So then then it isn't pushed back all onto those PTOs. So how do you engage them to assist with this as well?
I think that's a great, uh, a great point. I'm just not aware that, that, that our foundation can engage with that type of project in the future. For, for our schools, I think our foundation has been really deep and helping us enhance. I say as a board, we go to our local parent, we're typically saying attention. I think for some of the issues they've heard, they've been, uh, because a lot of times we've had students leave to a school that pretty soon was out there that did that ADA issue. They forced us to like, we're waiting to get that compliance in place. So in those instances, the foundation was not, you know, quick source to be able to get that. So I think it's been similar to what I was alluding to. But for sure, our, our foundation will look at our, with our broad strategy, it will, it will.
I guess just one other question that I, I would have about it as sort of, sort of at a high level. Isn't I totally get the philosophy behind the funding strategies? I guess I'd just be curious from, you know, from the school's perspectives and any other, any other different things. Do we feel like when we look at all the schools throughout the county, that like the playground stuff is really where we want it to be? You know, is it, does, I guess my question is like, does the current approach at the end of the day like result in enough funding that really all those kind of recreational spaces for kids are at the level that we'd like it to be? I mean, of course, like anything, more money's all the same. But like, what's your kind of high level sense on that? That things are pretty good, like this, this is kind of getting, you know, kind of getting it to places where it would want to be or, you know, it would be great to have more funding, like a lot of different.
I, I, I think certainly your priority when you're looking at, at, at capital funds is the, the main first of all, those classrooms and the building includes the senior infrastructure for the reactive classrooms. Now, I say that in that absolutely big playgrounds or, uh, the playgrounds, the athletic fields. Those are all extremely important, especially currently looking at the pandemic and the aspect of social, local health for our kids. And I think the goals are some for that to benefit the community, but it's not just the schools that utilize the playgrounds and the fields. It's needed, so. From that standpoint, I think there's, you know, there's, there's certainly advantages far beyond just the, the school. Here, and I'll give another example too. Today I had a discussion, you know, one of our schools at Jones. We have Jones Park, which is actually really a part of the city, but it's right next to the Jones Elementary. Well, we were donated that park to take care of, uh, it was a disaster. But it is something we actually want to be, because I, we should all go and say, if we can't possibly do that on our own, in addition to our regular school planner, the actual youth services would also ask them to be able to stay there because they didn't utilize our fields for practice purposes all the time. So we are, certainly for outside, we are looking for other additional funding sources that helps with that. Because of all the right, our, our general authority almost has to be classroom. And, you know, and you know, we always have playgrounds on that list. Of course, with me for the classroom, you sit, you go to the point that playgrounds there are quite good where they should be on the list to kind of be blessed with it.
And I totally agree with that. Other, the only, the only kind of counterpoint would be like, you know, with the school capital commissioner, we spend like $18 million a year, right? I mean, every year, 18, you know, it's, and there's, and again, the needs are huge, so. And some, some of these requests that come in are like $30,000. You know, and it's, in some ways, it seems like these pretty small amounts of money could, you know, could potentially have a, a nice impact while still being, you know, a tiny, tiny fraction compared to what we're, you know, appropriating for, for the, you know, the buildings, uh, which have dedicated, they, you know, they have dedicated funding sources, so. Anyway, I appreciate your thought. Other questions, commissioners, or thoughts on this?
I have a question. So if you want to go with your recommendations, it sounds to me like we're limiting their ability to come to us throughout the rest of society. And I just want to, I think one of the commissioner meetings as far as I'm on, I watched it with about, um, Brown and Penta. And so in a case like that, then that would, would limit their ability to be able to do that. And so do you feel like there aren't circumstances sometimes where they, they don't know at the time you're suggesting to be able to do that? I just, I'd like to hear some perspective on that.
I think that's a great question. I think one of the things I think that we've seen in some other areas like affordable housing and early childhood as we started to develop clear, repeating processes through which people can apply is that it begins to address that within a cycle or two. Because, uh, right now it's like, how do you even do this? And the county may not even be on the top list of potential funders for some of these projects. But if we had a process, my, my hope would be, and if we work with partners on it, that they could initiate some planning cycles that enable them to come forward on an annual basis for their projected needs around that. It doesn't address the sort of emergency issues that may come up. But my hopes would be there's some level of other community resources can respond to some of the blueprinting needs. The ones that have come to us in the last six months, playgrounds and the barn are both ones. And I think if we had a clear pathway for application, um, a, a, a project could be brought forward that way. And as I think of the last few years, I, I, those are the other kinds of projects I've heard of these conversations about ones that you could plan for on a 12-month cycle.
And for me, it was really coming from a fairness and equity standpoint, so that it's not the school who comes to us first or who has a really, you know, deep relationship with a particular commissioner. That we give everyone the same opportunity to receive additional funds versus bypassing channels and that type of thing. Really want it to be very fair and transparent.
And so you don't think there's times where they were able to get a grant or something even after that process that impacted their ability to come in advance?
Well, I think our, our anticipation is that we have a better idea of their needs in advance versus filling in emergency gap funding for projects. And yes, I mean, there's always going to be times where there's an unforeseen emergency. But I also think there are plenty of times, particularly in this recent case, where they totally kind of had an idea that that project was coming down the pipeline.
And maybe there's, maybe there's some ways to, um, you know, if there's some pool of funding that we appropriate into to do, do these kinds of things. I mean, maybe there'd be a way to have whoever's in this for that, you know, whoever's the committee of, that's, that thinks about that. Maybe they could do like a couple of applications a year. So it's not just kind of like, it's like really like what happens just in June. There's a whole lot of stuff that happens throughout the year and you wouldn't know about. So maybe there's a way that they could ask at a couple of different times. So, um, if it's in the middle of the year, you've got kind of another chance or something like that.
Yeah, so I would be interested in knowing over the past couple of years, what those off-budget cycle asks have been in terms of the amounts, in order to, to dig in and look at maybe a specific dollar amount we would want to allocate. Not opposed to allocating, let me say that. I really am about the transparent process that is fair.
And you know, too, when we want to be fair and we look at that, it's one thing that we don't want to talk about, but we need to. And I think playgrounds is a good example. And I can tell you from, in another life, I've served eight years on the city school board. But folks, one of the problems we have in being fair is we got to think of the zip code. Because in some areas, they can come up with a few checks, cover the playground. In other areas, no, the people are struggling just to survive. And I think too, that goes back to a lot of the, you know, maybe when we're getting ready to do this, but I think we don't need to just close the window. Maybe we can do it twice a year, like Brownie said, to do it differently. Because we have, when we look at the families we're working with, uh, in the schools, you know, the expertise is different in different locations. So some plan better than others or whatever. But I think our job is to make sure that we're treating everybody the same and that they're getting the fair rate. And that's my concern. And I think that's what we always got into while I was on the school board with playground. That was a big issue.
The major ask for us would be that it goes through the school central office?
Yeah.
And not just come directly?
Right, come direct to us. She had, they all should go through the school system, yeah.
That's the planning piece.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I refer them back to school.
I won't get into the weeds around, we, we talked through some of this other elements about what could work. But in terms of the administration or oversight, we did talk about, so Buncombe County School System has a student advisory board for every school. And then there was some conversation around, could there be a, a membership of a district-level advisory board that then would be the entry point for the ZET into the application process if we're doing that by district? So just to give you an idea of a potential, um, body to do some of that work, that was an idea that was generated in our conversation. We're not going to go into those details today. We can come back to you with a, you know, a more coordinated plan, but that, that was put out there as a possibility.
There are directions to come back with a better big deal plan.
Yeah, you know, I mean, it sounded like there's something along these lines. I thought it was, yeah, it sounds pretty interesting and could, could be a way to, you know, or to, to do some things that we're not just kind of fielding these one at a time. Community members, you know, ask, idea, that there should be some process to look at.
And the other element to that is, is that if we work to define, if it's an annual, annual dollar amount in total, if the idea is, is that you want two rounds of applications, you've got the money that's identified and then you could do that process on, on two cycles within the year within that same funding allocation that's done on a daily basis. All right? Excellent. So without further ado, I am going to hand the podium over to Sam Riddle. He was one of our budget analysts. He's been with the county for close to two years. And we were fortunate enough to have wrangled someone him from Buncombe County Schools. So Sam comes to us with over six years of school funding experience. So he's our subject matter expert to talk about patron health funding.
Good to see you all. Karen, here's the board. So as Jen said, my name is Sam Riddle. I've been at the county for two years and before that, six years with Buncombe County School and their budget office. And so we're talking about appropriating for education today. I'll give you a heads up at a certain point in the presentation, we're going to get a little deep. So hang with me, we're going to get through it together. I'm going to come back up, we're going to summarize how all the pieces fit together and we're going to move forward from there. With that said though, if you do have any questions, I would ask if you write those down. That way we can kind of get through that heavy section together and. All right, so we talked about appropriating for education. We have to start with the context. So looking at our 21 amended budgets, things you've already seen today, I'm sure, $342 million budget. The largest single functional area is education at 92.6 million, roughly 27%. And that's broken up into a few areas. Education support, 3K, ADT, and of course, Buncombe County Schools and actual city schools, which are by far the largest portions of that. So it's worth saying at this point too, that when the board appropriates to these entities per statute, those funds are actually broken apart by something called average daily membership or ADM. And average daily membership is just a way of counting the number of students in each classroom, in each school, each day for the first few months of the year. And at a certain point in time, that becomes a set ADM that's carried for the remainder of the year. That number is what Department of Public Construction uses to determine some pots of money, some allocations. And is how, uh, as I said, by statute, we have to distribute those dollars. And it's always around 85, 15, 85% being Buncombe County Schools, 15% for actual city schools. So speaking of statute, what else does it say about how we fund schools? Well, it starts off by saying that the state would cover the instructional expenses while the facility requirements should be met by county governments. And while that seems simple enough, it does not stop there. It goes on to say, there's a local current expense fund. If we add it to the state dollars, it should cover all of the current year's operating expense. Of course, the money that the board decides upon is within the financial resources and consistent with those policies of the county commissioner. So it goes on to say though, that the board has some discretion in this. That is that they may allocate by purpose, function, or project as defined by the uniform budget format. And if the board chooses to do that, they have to set an amendment flexibility up to 25%. And that just means that if you were to say, this particular function gets $100, they could spend $125 without having to come back to you for a budget. But I don't want you to get hung up on that. What I want you to focus on are the emboldened terms on the screens here. That is purpose, function, and project. So project is a capital term. Purpose and function, those are operating terms and we know all that because of the uniform budget format. But what exactly is that? Well, it's the standard format decided upon the LGC and the state board that all local school administrative units use. That includes charter schools. It's a little bit different for them, but they have to use the same standard budget format. And what is it? It's a 19-digit account. So here's the good news, we are not going to go through each individual digit of this code. Bad news is, what I mentioned beforehand, this is the neat part. So hang with me, we're going to get through this. We're going to talk about it in terms of roles and responsibilities, what's state, what's county. And we're going to talk about it as to where dollars are first obligated to. Hopefully you'll understand what I mean as we move through here. So the first area is fund. Fund is just the pot of money that's been provided by the entity, right? So the state gives a pot of money, that's fund one. County gives a pot of money, that's fund two. Federal government gives a pot of money, that's fund three, and so on. Those pots of money don't mix. You can't take from one and add to the other. They have to stay separate and distinct, and that's why fund is at the top. The next one down is program or PRC. Now, program is how the state allocates money. Whereas our statute, the county has no ability to direct funds by program. And program is the goal that the dollars are intended to address. So this is, it's small, I know from where you're sitting. This is a planning, a document provided by DPI for Buncombe County Schools. And notice in the green circle there, PRC, Program Report Code. And if you can see it, if you can't, that's okay, we'll just go through. So some of the ones here, classroom teachers, school building administration, teacher assistants, children with special needs, transportation, driver training. Each of those is designed to, those dollars fulfill that specific goal. But again, I don't want us to get too hung up on that, but hopefully that helps you understand how much program is. The next one down is purpose function. You'll notice that I underlined those first two Xs there and we'll come back to why I did that in a moment. But as you probably already put together, this is where we can commit, or the board can commit. You may allocate this way. However, the state still sets the rules. What do I mean by that? So it's a big accounting, right? And certain pieces work together while others do not. So one of the programs we were just looking at was school building administration. That's a pot of money that funds for, that's funds for principals at each school. And that's all it does. Well, principals are paid using the code 5400, School Leadership Services. And you can find that, I believe at the back of the slides, there's a list of purpose functions you can take a look at. School Leadership Services is the only allowable purpose function in 005 School Building Administration. In other words, those two things work together and that's what the state allows to have. That's what I mean by state sets the rules there. The next one down is object code, and very similar. State still sets the rules here per statute. County has no ability to direct funding by object, but object is really important. Because object is what the thing actually is. So examples of object code include teacher salaries, health insurance premiums, contracted services, supplies and materials, and even the local supplement. Which is always a big discussion, right? If the board were to ask the school systems, how much of our money went to local supplement this year? What you're asking for is an object level analysis. And that's important to keep in mind, we're going to touch on that a bit later as well. So, everybody, take a deep breath with me, we're back at the surface now, right? So we're going to take a look at this, we're going to summarize it. So you're probably looking at this and you think, program, that looks good, right? We want our dollars to go, to go to specific goals. The state provides money this way. It's going to make the most sense to the schools because the state's the majority funder, right? But unfortunately, by statute, we're unable to direct funds. Or you might look at object and say, okay, well, object code, we can direct it to specific areas, right? But again, per statute, unable to direct funds. What you do have is purpose function. And we're going to look at what kind of value we can get out of purpose function. So purpose function is that set of four Xs, right? It's the type of activity that's being engaged in. If you were to review that list, I think you would kind of get that feeling just looking at what's there. It's often known as the legal level, the very fact that we're talking about it right now. And the fact that if you look at almost any budget ordinance for a board of education across the state, it's going to be by purpose. And it's very structural. That's important to keep in mind, this is where that underline comes in. So while the full four-digit code is purpose dash function, the statute's very clear that the county may direct by purpose comma function. So the first X is the purpose. The second is the function. The third is the sub-function, and the fourth is up to district discretion. That is, they can choose what they want that fourth one to be. So let's look at an example, 5117, what the world's at. Well, 5,000 means instructional. Another way of thinking of that might be, it happens in a school. 5,100 means regular instructional, or maybe it happens in a classroom. 5110, regular curricular, or maybe a normal subject, we might call that. And 5117 might be math or science instruction, depending on what the district has set for that. Now, as far as the board is concerned for directing funds, it stops at regular instruction, right? And that can be a little bit of an issue in terms of understanding because purpose functions tend to create a broader umbrella than we're usually accustomed to thinking of things in specific terms. And it can be confusing. So if we look at an example like 5810, it's instructional before, but it's also school-based support, which means it's an enhancement to the learning environment. And 5810 is educational media, so media center, library services, maybe follow. 5850, on the other hand, that's instructional, it's school-based support, but it's safety and security, SRO, security equipment. So in terms of funding, it stops at school-based support. So theoretically, the board could appropriate to school-based support with the intent that the funds be spent on safety and security, spent on SROs. The school could technically be meeting the letter of the law, but providing those to library service, educational media, media center, library services, or vice versa. And so that can be a source of compete. So, other than these technical things, I want us to look at a real example. Subunkum County Schools has produced for many years, you've finished it, it's a really solid document called the Budget Resource Document. It's a thick book, but we're going to look at that PDF now. I included some highlights at the end of your slides. But I'm going to show it, since it's a big document, I'm just going to scroll down a little here. Is that the PDF at the top?
Give me a second, because I need to reach out there for an actual series.
Oh, good. Okay, so click on adopted budgets, scroll back up.
Get a guide.
One down, one more, click right there. Just to the right, Budget Resource Document, there we go, click that one. All right, so this is the Budget Resource Document, it starts with letters of transmittal. But I want to stop here, this is in your handout. This is the Subunkum County School, or Subunkum Board of Education budget ordinance. And notice what's there at the top, purpose, right? That's how they broke down funds in order for the board to approve the budget by purpose. Scroll down a little more, we get to the good stuff, that is the budget overview section. So, forgive me, I know it's at the bottom here. So the thing to note here, it starts by purpose, right? And we are fund to, the local current expense fund. So if you look at how those funds are broken down, you'll see, okay, hey, 43 million of our dollars are going to instructional services. That's good, right? If we go down a little bit further, we get to the table where it's broken down by purpose function. Okay, we're getting a little more information here. Again, we're fund to, and if you look down this list, you say, right off the top, oh boy, almost 19 million for regular instructional services. Again, that's good. Not 100% sure what's in there, but we do know it's classroom-related. Or maybe you get down here and you say, hey, 14 million for operational support services. Not 100% sure what is included in that, right? It doesn't really jump out to you. But if we continue scrolling down, we get to an object category breakdown. Now we're getting to something that's a little easier to understand. That is, if you notice here, you'll look down, oh man, 14 million in supplementary and benefits-related pay. That's the local supplement. That's a 181 fund, it's included in there. And so when you look at that, you're saying, a lot of our, the dollars provided are going to local supplement. Okay, so now we can start to understand where the dollars are going. For that matter, if you look up and down this list here, you'll notice that most of the dollars are concentrated in these first two areas, and that is pay and benefits. Now we kind of understand where the dollars are going. Of course, there are other things to note there, but you couldn't have gotten to this just on purpose function. You had to put the pieces together to start to see where those dollars are going. Can we switch back, please? So if there is one big takeaway I want you to get from all this, it's communication. That is, you are an elected body. County Board of Education is an elected body, the actual city school board is an appointed body. Each has an able and qualified financial and administrative staff. And so for you to understand their needs and for them to understand your expectations, communication needs to be, that's obvious. But even beyond the obvious, per statute, you have the full authority to call for the records, reports to help you understand the financial operation of the school administrative unit. It's important to keep in mind. So now we're going to turn to a brief period of discussion, and I want to set this up. So a specific area of feedback we're looking for today is on the context of funding schools. What are you interested in? Are you wanting to continue the sort of lump sum stuff, but maybe add some additional reporting, add that extra communication? Are you interested in funding by purpose function? Something that Jen and I have talked about is maybe standardizing the budget requests that we receive from schools. As a matter of fact, I failed to mention it, but it is in your packets. There's a table, an object summary table that says salaries, benefits, contracts, supplies, something like that, just as a way of understanding what the budget request is, where those dollars might be going. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you and we can go to the fourth question.
Sam, can I just say, I may have this in the handout to refer to, and we can tie that to the board. It's in there.
Right now, we give a lump sum amount to the schools and that gets broken up by ADM to go to actual city schools. So the question is, do we continue a lump sum? Purpose function doesn't get you the detail, if you're trying to figure out where the money is going. So the purpose function doesn't really get you there, which is where we are allowed by law to go. But if we do want, as you mentioned in the communication slide, if you want to ask for more details on when to ask for the budget requests, you can get to the level of detail that you're looking for. Is all our money going to salaries, is it going to STEM education, where is it going? You can ask for that in the report, the request coming from the budget. And then we can still do the lump sum based on what they give us. We want to ask, what are you looking for? We keep, kind of every year, we talked about, we need more details, but we don't really address that. So today we're asking, we've got to pull up the slide.
This is what I was talking about.
Right.
Now, that's all fun to aggregate it together, but that is clearly easy to understand where the dollars are going. Just in that take.
So, Arul, are you suggesting that, like in a subsequent budget year, we might not just vote to approve, like, you know, the top line number, of course, whatever that is, we're going to say, here's how much money we can appropriate overall to the schools this year. But in addition to the top line number, we would break out, like, so for the funds we're providing, we want this, 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 and this, these sub-numbers to prescribe how those funds are used in a more specific way than we have in the past. Is that what you're asking?
No, no.
I'm not sure I'm clear with the question being asked.
Right, so I'm still asking for the top line number, but we can ask them to tell us where it's going. So we can ask them to give us a summary like this, so we know where it's going. But we're still appropriating, let's use the number on the screen, 310 million. We're still appropriating that to the schools. But instead of just giving them that lump sum, we can ask, how much is going to go in these specific steps? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
For informational purposes, do you still need more?
Yes, and for the last two budget years, we've done this, that question comes up. And what we're asking for is a more standardized format between actual city schools and Subunkum County Schools. They both come with a request, but they're all different. So if you want to put them together and say, here's how we want you to request the money from us, we're still going to give you a lump sum, but now we know where it's going. That way we're not getting into purpose or function, because purpose and function does not get us to the level that we need to truly make decisions. Jasmine has her hand up.
Oh, I love the idea of a presentation like this and it being standardized across those systems. I understand the statutory restrictions. If there was an area where there was sort of a shared desire to prioritize funding, could we enter into an MOU or other arrangement with the school system to say, like a voluntary arrangement through which funds could be allocated for a specific initiative?
We have, we have done that through the 3K conversation now, so I would have to say yes, we've done it before. So Jasmine, can you repeat your question?
Yeah, of course, it was, it was just a question of whether, understanding the statutory restrictions, if we could, if there was a shared desire to do so, we could enter into an MOU or other kind of agreement with the school system around a priority area.
Yeah, I think so. So I have to see why we're getting rid of it. In fact, for our project, we did a special line of the budget based on the statute that Sam's been calling.
So to be clear, Michael, this is in fact, it's the local current expense. So there's, oh, no, one more, right, by project. But I think what Jasmine's question still is, is not that it's by the purpose function, which is that statute piece that Sam has rolled over. I think what you're asking is to, even to a greater level of commitment around where we're going to spend the dollars.
If there was a shared desire to do that. Shared by?
I think so.
Shared by? Yes, I, I'm sorry. No, that's a great question. If I shared, I mean, for instance, let's say a school system said, we really want to elevate our equity work in the next five years, and the county says, we're elevating our equity work for the next five years. Could there be a shared desire, for instance, to say, you know, that's going to be a feature of how the local dollars are allocated in the next five years? I, this is hypothetical, I'm just trying to understand.
So, I want to be certain, got to move it, because you can take your money from the local current expense.
Yeah.
I think that would be in addition to the local current expense, not taking away from our...
Yeah, I don't necessarily mean taking away, potentially adding to.
Yes, yeah.
But how do we partner best with you all around the things that our community so much needs us to partner on? And part of that is how funding is allocated, but also clear purpose around that funding. That's what I'm trying to get into, I might have kind of gone through the back door. But I'm excited about what that could look like potentially, if there were some areas of shared, shared, shared priorities.
Sorry.
That was a great question. You got to be able to, you have to ask those questions.
I just wanted to tell Sam about being a diversity coordinator and what he said. And that is impressive.
I did, if you would want to admit to me that this minimum effort, we would need to take a road tour to see, about because it would be an addition. An addition, we can ask them to do things or pay them to do it, that's different than minimum of the local current expense. And so we'd be going beyond the month.
Understood, thank you.
The top line number that we're giving them now, so additional stuff.
So I guess just, you know, one, I don't know, just a question or just like an observation on kind of how this seems to sort of play out. So I understand there are limits of what we can prescribe. But it also, and I'm all for, you know, to standardize and some of these budgeting processes to kind of think it all through real consistently, I think that's a good idea. But in some ways, it sort of seems like the way the process works is kind of in reality. It's like, you know, every year, we're going to put more funds towards the schools than we did the year before, if nothing else, it must have been inflation and things like that, right? So unless, you know, you con- So unless, you know, economy really went sideways or something like that, that'd be different, but hopefully that's not more practical to work through in your future. But usually, the schools come in and they talk about how things are going and what new things they would like to do. Because there's always new ideas for, you know, what can we do better, or what can we, you know, strengthen? And what it would cost to do those things, in addition to kind of what we're already choosing, like, there's the base case, and then there's, you know, here's some new things that we think will make the schools better, but hey, we need to kind of support to do that. And in terms of some of those details, that, you know, some of those are things we can't specifically prescribe, but the reality is, you know, there's kind of a conversation going on around. Authority, wants to direct some of those details. In some ways, they do kind of, you know, you know, whether we appropriate additional funds to do some or all of those things, isn't a big, from a practical standpoint, whether or not it happens. So I can, maybe that's another question, but it seems like that is part of how it plays out. We're not, we can't really tell you what to do with the funds, but if we aren't able to, but if you're telling us, here's what we'd like to do, and if you appropriate additional funds, we'll try to do those things. I mean, and that all seems totally appropriate, so none of that's, you don't see any of that as inconsistent with what our authorities are.
No, not at all. I think the intent of the presentation, Sam, me if I'm off-base at all on this, but I think it's more anything just to kind of give you some understanding of what it looks like on that side, from the school side, maybe some of their even reporting obstacles, and what that might mean for how or if the county uses, see, James' allocation method.
I do, I do sometimes wonder, you know, when we do get into really particular conversations about funding, that sometimes maybe you do kind of walk up to that line of, like, are we being too prescriptive? Like, we're saying, we're going to give this as money, and it needs to be for this. I don't know. Sometimes, I mean, I don't know, the stat, I feel like the, how you've been here, Avril, we get, where we may be approaching that line of.
School system? For the schools?
With the schools of being, of kind of potentially stepping beyond the level of prescription and the budget process that.
No, we have not done that.
Which is not to say we don't feel like you have.
Yeah, yeah. Sort of previous this for so many years. And I'm saying, if you ask them, what do you need to do about, Shane, I believe this is true of both systems. It falls into, exactly where Sam said, salaries and benefits. So historically, especially recent years, what we point to you, the vast majority of our employees fall into state salary increases and benefit health insurance and retirement rate increases, and that's dependent upon state. I think you heard me, just entering this drum, but the challenge is, we bring this to you legally by May fifteenth, and in most cases recently, we've not had those state figures finalized until after May fifteenth. In some cases, it's June and July. That's the crux of where I see is a real, it's a true issue in terms of us writing these budget requests to you. And in all honesty, I'd say over the past three years, a fat-ass officer had a flat tire, so she's on her way.
She's on her way. I'm telling her to hurry.
I think what you provide is that, allow the funding that is appropriated by the county commissioners, that ninety percent plus of that just simply needs the adjustments that we have to have in order to make sure that we're equitable with our locally paid staff, based upon the state salary increases, and those dollars come from our state-based paid employees, or eighty percent of our employees are locally based employees, locally based paid employees. So that, to me, is at the heart of any discussion that takes place between a school system and the board. And there are differences between Ashford City and Vulcan County Schools. That has to be regarding the source of funding, but still, for the majority of us in the state, we're talking about sixty-five to sixty-eight percent of the funds be state, and we're dependent upon the state. So I just continue to see that as a prior.
We certainly, and if you were at a certain approach level, you would never see, look like salary increases to the state. It's happened, and everything comes off, and it's not that we, in fact, we wish it beneficial for you to ask that, we won't tell you while we're asking, but we'll be very forth to you and say, look, we understand this looks like salary increase, but it really is, we didn't keep up the benefits and the, the, the part of the piece, but the state is asking us to do, always salary increase, they love. That is a real, that's a real wrong, that's a real wrong. They can have the addition of, when they tell us, number of teachers and student ratio that we have, so that dramatically, in the past two or four years, we want to have a low number, but low number means that that's going to be a lot of the life, that's going to have to be, because that's what we do, the state is, is all our bare and budget, specifically, that's that, there's state and state. I need to do that, and I feel very strong about that inclusion account. We were wonderful, helping us get through a situation at the primary school, to provide some, and she had, we're shooting, my mother, we kind of had a whole issue. Well, now, there's a board, maybe that's, we would have minded it to the Vulcan School in that facility, which is, which is, say, a real emergency. And in the middle of all that, you know, you heard recently, I have to, like, we just don't put that building. But I want you to know that, the money that you put in, you're like, we have a preschool there, we're not going to reduce our preschool, we better get, you want that preschool to be open, we're going to be so quiet, so, so, what we're going to have to really, so also money and the rooms that are placed, who they want to do, we have to convince the preschools. But that's it. You know, if you want to be, we should be good to the system and the lawyers.
I just, I can't shut up, I'm sorry. I want to let everybody here know that when we, and I'm sure Ashford City's the same way, ask for money for a specific purpose, we don't go out and buy other things. We are very careful what we ask for, and Miss Moneybags disappeared, I want you to know. And I want that trust level to be there, that we're not out doing other things. When we ask for money, I'm going to do this, when we ask for money for store doors, we're going to buy store doors, let me just say, that's what I'm saying. Thank you, I feel better.
So the point of this, was not really to get the purpose function, because we don't really believe there's any real authority or anything that can answer your questions, but using purpose function. We're explaining to you, if you want to go a different route to y'all, y'all love some, purpose function's not going to get you the answers that you're looking for. So I don't think purpose function's where you guys want to go either, so you tell me. I don't think so. So what we were asking is a different format, that we can develop a format that they can put to us at end spot point, to get us the details that we're looking for, but not hamper them in how they report. Shane is saying they also want to be transparent. Our job is to hold them accountable, spending the largest part of our general fund tax dollars. So our ask of you today is, let us work with them to develop that and bring you back, how they're going to come to you asking for funding, not at the object level, we don't want to put that bracket in there, but we do want to understand how they're spending our money, and the outcomes that we expect to get from that lump sum money that we're giving to them.
Your question for us is, we want to know the maximum information about the money we're allocating, of course, yes.
And I think what we need to do is, is simple though. Since every year, over half of our budget is to the schools, and it should be, don't misunderstand, but when I hear from constituents, and we got, you know, in Vulcan County, I'm from every extreme, but the key is, however we report those numbers, let's make sure that they're transparent and that everybody can understand. You know, they can look at them pretty quick and say, boom, boom, okay, this is what we need, because I think that's part of the problem I hear from listening to constituents, is that they can't understand why we're spending so much for the schools. Of course, it's easy for me, you know, I spent sixteen years on university boards and eight on public schools, so I'm familiar, and I can explain to them, but we need to make sure we can't assume that the taxpayers understand what's going on, but we need our public soup, we got to have it, but let's make it just transparent so that everybody can, people like me can understand. Yeah.
And so may, it may not be something we can answer today, but if you reflect back over the last couple of missed school year cycles, are there questions that didn't get answered, that you still feel you didn't have enough information on, that would have been helpful, that we can really hone in on as we move into this next half of the planning cycles, that we can work with the schools to try to really parse out? And again, that may not be something that you answered today, but if that's something you can provide that to us, that would be really helpful for us to ensure that we're really trying to get that, you know, from the schools, and in a way that answers your questions.
You know, the one other just process question, you know, at a really high level that I have, is just, I mean, it's, this is such a significant part of our budget. I mean, one question is just sort of, what is the starting point for thinking about what we can do over and above each year, what we've done, what we're already doing? In any given year, and maybe you're sort of thinking about, like, over the next four or five years, like, what, you know, where are we going? You know, things will happen that we don't know are going to happen, but, you know, but we do kind of have a sense of the different trends and different graphics in the county and stuff like that. I would love to be able to, kind of between our, you know, between the county and, you know, and the schools, be able to kind of think about that, you know, where, what are we going to try to, you know, I mean, we're all elected at four-year terms, and they're stacked in terms, and, you know, some of us, you know, I'll be here four years, but that, you know. But I'd love to be able to kind of think about, kind of multi-year planning, that's something we've been asking our staff to think about too, in other parts of the county operations. We've got, I mean, this is our number one priority, but we do have all these other priorities too, that we have to, we have to work on and think about. So, you know, when George Wood was here, he had this philosophy of, you know, we need to look at what the growth of the budget is, have the budget staff look at that. And while invariably, this will break out differently in different departments, I think kind of the starting point was to different parts of the organizations and partners that we fund is, hey, it looks like our budget's probably going to be, let's say, two percent higher next year based on current forecast, so, you know, that's kind of a starting number for thinking about what different departments and partners can do, that's the, you know, unless we're going to do a tax increase, like, that's, which we have, maybe sometimes you might need to do a tax increase, but that's kind of a starting point for thinking about budget planning. And, you know, George did a great job in interim, yeah, I don't, I don't know how much that particular idea, you know, I don't know, is thought about, you know, in your administration, Avril, or, but it's just such a big part of the budget, I just, sometimes I'm wondering, like, how do the schools think about, where do we, there's so many different things that the school must be able to do. What's, how do you start off, then, here's the, here's the number we're going to shoot for? You know, it seems, it seems like.
We haven't been shooting for much, because we, sincerely, because we didn't figure there was anything out there to give, so to hear you have, I need to leave, I am just running, I'm very sorry, but to hear you say that you would like to have that, we have all kinds of things that we can put out there that would benefit the children of this county, but for the past few years, we've just been hoping that we got enough funding to maintain.
Well, if you look at the last, you know, five or six or seven years, the increased funding for Vulcan County significantly, significantly exceeds the growth of our budget. And then the increased funding to the schools has been, you know, dramatically more than the funding that we put towards, you know, county parks or like that, so, and I'm glad we did every single bit, it's one of the best things I think we've done. But, you know, thinking, thinking kind of years into the future, how do we, you know, how do we develop that kind of trajectory for where we're going to, we're going to get? Some kind of shared sense of that, I think, would be helpful, but right now, it seems like every year, we just kind of do that year, you know, and I think it's, a lot of good stuff's come out of it, but I'd love to be able to figure out some kind of more predictable formula for how we do kind of plan for the future.
And I would say, you were, to start with this, could they have been incredibly supportive to Vulcan District? I mean, I talk in terms of state rights with what provided Vulcan County. But again, I go back to, I applaud and echo the ability to look forward, to set some goals ahead, but the issue that I've seen most recently for a number of years is getting past the base request that we come to you regarding salaries and benefits, that essentially neither one of us have control over because they're set by the state. Now, here's what, here's where your local funds for these salaries go. If we did not have them, our arts program, our physical education program, many of the electeds that are incredibly important in both of our school systems, the state does not cover, and it's a myth, but believe, the state funds cover the salaries to pay for the positions that are needed to provide the quality of education that I believe this commission, and I hope all of us, this room, we expect for our children in this school system. So you've got to initially get past that amount of funds in order to, and the recurring funds, that's the other piece of it, this isn't a one-time investment, this is recurring funds. In order to maintain that, that's taken a significant, and in some cases, it actually exceeded the amount of funds that the commission initially looked at as available to our sources. This is, this is at the crux of understanding the budget, for sure.
So, yeah, I want to go further on that. I think the pandemic is going to really shift some things in terms of our house, and I knew with the COVID report, that, hey, let's invest more in technology, reduce our people. I think what this has proven is, not only do we have to put a lot of money in the technology in a really sort of order, but you cannot replace the face-to-face contact, the social emotional health of our students, is what the concept is, you know, that is all locally funded, you don't need to get in touch with another guy, it's, you know, first we have to play a drop and a bucket, because the social emotional need that is going to come out of it, and so that, we're talking four or five years to this recovery from some of the issues that's been going on right now, then, I think the state will give us some more technology, that's model, and that costs still a lot of it. So I think we're in a true shift, and how things are getting made to recover, that no, it's not going to be technology or humans, it's going to, you're going to need both, and it's going to be a bigger proposition, equal access.
All right, so we're, we need to move on, but before we, this is really important, so I want to make sure people that have any other questions or comments to share on this topic, episode.
I would just say. So I just want, I thought about Al's, and I think this is what would be very useful with the reporting, is for us to see, you know, what the staff, so it is going to the librarian, or the principal, or the assistants, and I think that's how it helps us communicate with the public about the funding that's going to be, because the majority of it is going to be the staff, and so then if we're able to see that and say, hey, this is what makes a difference, you know, you have the art teacher, and it's for the public, those type of things would be very helpful.
All right. Thank you, and thank you for being here and being part of this, and thanks for this, this is great information in the process. So, all right, Avril, what's. All right, I will, what's, what's next? Okay, how long you wanna?
I think it's less than five minutes.
Just kidding, five minute break, okay.
Yes.
So already today, you've heard from Dawn where we have been. You've heard from Jennifer where we are and we started to kind of touch on with the idea of education where we're going. And so the presentation after this will start our financial analysis. Where are we going FY 22 and 23? But to really understand where we are, we've talked about where we are in the context of the Buncombe County budget. We also have to understand where we are in terms of the local economy. I'll give you the spoiler alert upfront. You'll see mixed signals throughout. In order to really assess the local economy, you have to look at multiple indicators in aggregate. You've previously heard from Tim Love. He's presented some economic indicators primarily at the metropolitan level. So not just Buncombe County, but also Madison, Henderson, Haywood, Transylvania. What we've tried to do today is isolate metrics that are available at the county level. So we don't really come in on what is happening here locally. So I'll go through a few categories of indicators. The first will really focus most of our time on is unemployment and labor market. You'll see a few different metrics there and we'll talk through what those mean. The next is construction and permits. We'll look at real estate and then we'll kind of tie it back into our budget with sales and property tax. I will tell you that most of these indicators have a two-month lag. By the time you get down to the local level, it's a little bit more of a lag than some of the national or state level metrics. But again, you'll see throughout this, there are mixed signals across these different indicators. So before I jump into our first indicator, early on in the pandemic, I, you know, every headline you read said uncertain. Uncertainty here, uncertainty there. And a colleague of mine finally posted and he said, we need to accept uncertainty is the new certainty. Obviously, we're seeing some positive news, vaccines starting to come about, what that logistics look like of distribution. But at least for the foreseeable future, uncertainty is still our certainty. And we have to acknowledge that with many of these indicators. You can't necessarily look at a single point, the latest metric. You have to look at what has that trend been? You can't just look at last month and know we're on the path to recovery. You have to look at what that's looked like. So I just ask that you keep that in mind as we go through these indicators. So the first indicator I want to show you is one that we hear a lot about, unemployment and labor market. I'll try to use a laser pointer here just to guide you if you want to look at this screen. But what you see here is starting in January 2020, our unemployment rate. The solid red line is Buncombe County. You see it peaks there in April. The blue dash line, it is Asheville's metropolitan area we've seen previously. And the green dash line is all of North Carolina. So first off, focus on kind of this period in April, May. And you see that Buncombe County was worse than Asheville as a whole metro and worse, significantly worse than the state. In terms of unemployment rate, we peaked at 17.7 in April and we're at 6.2 unemployment rate in October. The Asheville MSA for comparison peaked at 16.2% in April and is now at 5.9% as of, as of October. And North Carolina peaked at 12.5 in April or 12.7 in May, they were 12.5 in April. And now they're at 6.1. That's the Asheville metro area, not the city of Asheville.
The Asheville metro area.
The whole of County D.
That's correct. I wouldn't be able to get to the isolated Buncombe County is the most granular we're going to get to. And so what you see is Buncombe County compared to the other counties that make up our metro. Buncombe County had a more severe labor market response, which we would expect, given that's kind of where the concentration of our industry is, is here in Buncombe County, likely Asheville City. Now I will tell you, unemployment rate is only one metric and it's not the perfect metric. And the reason is unemployment rate is calculated as unemployed persons over the labor force. People that are working or actively seeking work or in that 12-week unemployment benefit period. Now we had, we've gone over the last year from 3,900 unemployed persons in Buncombe County to 8,300 unemployed. More than double. That is significant. But what this metric doesn't calculate is we also have 9,000 fewer people participating in the labor force today as of October than a year ago. So it's significantly higher. This metric doesn't fully include those 9,000 people that have left the labor force. And you can start to ask the question, why? Some may be after taking care of childcare. Some may have pursued higher education. There are a number of factors that that may be, but this is something we have to look at and at least consider. This is kind of the first metric that we'll look at. So we go from there, kind of preview there, we go to employed persons. And so this shows you employed persons since January of 2019 through October. You see a very large drop in April. Now mind the Y-axis, you see here it's 104,000. So we go from about 137,000 people employed in February in Buncombe County to about 107,000. Fewer people employed in that two-month span from February to April. Here we are in October. That's the latest data we have. We have increased to 126,000 employed persons. So we're 19,000 more than we were at our trough in April, but we are still 12,300 below February. And so that goes back to, that includes the people that have exited the labor force as well as those that are newly unemployed. What does this mean? If we were to translate this, 12,000 people and we looked at our per capita income, we have lost. If this trend continued, 12,000 people out of work. Per year, $387 million in payroll to Buncombe County citizens or per month, 32 million in lost wages. It's really important to put this in context of what does this mean? The next question when I look at this, as I asked, is, is it uniform across different citizens, across wage, wage levels, demographics, things like that? Unfortunately, we have a data set from a group of researchers out of Harvard led by economist Raj Chetty. And what they have done is they've kind of looked at this exact question and they, they use some private data. They look at January as a baseline and they say, what's our change in employment versus January over time? I'm going to show you that this is for all of North Carolina, using January as a baseline. This data is a little more lagged through September 30th. So if we assume we had a certain employment level in January in North Carolina, see cyclical seasonal trends. We jump up a little bit in March and then a huge reduction by the end of April. And you see as of September 30th, 7.7 fewer percent fewer people are employed in North Carolina than they were in January of this year. In April of, April 20th was the trough in North Carolina. 22.8% fewer people were employed across the state. In September, we're back to 7.7. Again, you see we've kind of, we've had the quick recovery, but how long will it take us to get back to where we were? This data set is powerful for two reasons. The first is I can take it to the Buncombe County level. The second is then I can show you by wage classification. So here's North Carolina and you see zero, the trough is about 25%. When we look at Buncombe County, be mindful of the Y-axis here. Our trough in April was 34.6%. Across all of Buncombe County in April, we had 34.6 fewer people employed on April 18th than in January. September, September 30th, we're back to 13.2%. Again, we've kind of made some, some quick gains, but how long does it take us to get to that, that remaining, remaining job loss? So as I told you, gave the preview, I'll show you this by income classification. The way this data set takes it is high wage is 60,000 or higher for the individual. Middle wage is 27 to 60,000 and low wage is below 27,000, which I think is about 12.50 an hour in terms of an hourly wage. So I'll do the same. I'll show you North Carolina as a whole first. You see that the high wage is this blue line, see an increase trough in April of minus 9.2%. That high wage group in North Carolina actually is better off today than they were in January. As of September 30th, that high wage group in North Carolina, there are 1.7% more people employed in North Carolina that make more than $60,000. The middle wage in North Carolina had a trough of minus 18.2%. That's this green line here and you see minus four and a half percent September 30th. And this red line is the low wage category at a trough of minus 38.7% in April. And they've recovered partially to minus 18.3% as of September 30th. What this data shows you is the job loss is primarily targeted to the lower paying jobs, which is, is what we have maybe have been able to infer when we think about tourism, hospitality and things like that. But we have to be mindful of what we're actually seeing. So I told you, this is North Carolina. Let's look at Buncombe County by income classification. We have not seen across the board, the same amount of job recovery as the state as a whole. I'll start with the high wage group here. We were below 20%. We lost 21.3% of unemployed persons. High wages are still at minus 4.7 as of September 30th. Middle wage trough was 35.5%. And kind of the biggest statistic here, low wage employees was minus 46.7%. That means from January to mid-April, we have 47% fewer people in Buncombe County employed in those, in those low paying jobs. And you see here, even as of September 30th, the recovery for that category is, is very slow compared to any other that we've looked at so far, still at minus 30%. I will caveat, there are some factors of seasonality, cyclicality. But at the same time, compared to the other factors we've seen, that is the most severe response in the labor market that, that we've seen so far. It's that Buncombe County low wage classification. So that concludes our section on unemployment and labor market. Before we pivot to construction, permanent value, things like that, I want to just pause and see if there's any questions related to.
Curious if anyone collects data on hiring, industries that are hiring, that these metrics are currently in terms of the quality of employees that hire. Is that a way to see into the future, I guess?
So I wouldn't necessarily say that looking at the hiring data is a way to predict the future. But I would say it could give us some trends. Some of this data is then broken down by sector. You can, you can then see where the job loss has occurred. I know the Chamber works on some of that in terms of the hiring as well as actual number of jobs in each sector. So it's something we can certainly look at. But from anecdotally, when I have looked at this, it's a lot of hospitality and tourism is, is where a lot of the job loss occurred.
I think the last anecdotal observation is that just in the last two months as opposed to maybe four or five months ago, it seems like a lot of low wage employers in the community are hiring again, retail restaurants, that kind of, that's what I've seen. That's kind of why I asked.
Yeah. And I will say that's one of the challenges of this, of the granular labor market data is that there is that two-month lag. So that certainly could be from, through the month of November and beginning of December, we could pick that up. Now I will say the one uncertainty here that I've not addressed is what happens with continued restrictions? We know what that labor market response was, was in, what that was in response to. It was our, our travel, our state home orders, updates to that. What happens if we go back into that mindset? Who's affected by that? And like all good economists, the answer is it depends. I don't know for sure, but we have to be mindful of that if we, if we think through that and start to get into this projecting and forecasting out. Not entirely certain.
So is there, is there more deep, is there more detailed information on this? I mean, just in terms of like we say, like low wage sector, but like I'm just, I'd be curious, for example, like obviously restaurants have just had a horrible pandemic, still aren't serving, the, the, the limitations and just a lot of people just don't eat indoors now because it's not safe. So like in Buncombe County, do we know how many people specifically in rest, like in the restaurant sector, where we were and where we are today?
We, we could get that information and look at the sector level. I will say that I don't believe that restaurant would be a category down to that level. So you'd have to do a little more digging in terms of private data sources, but we can certainly come back to you for more information.
I think it'd be just interesting to understand that in a little bit more breakdown in terms of, obviously we know with the, with the hotels, like when we were making lodging, the big hotels just had to lay almost everyone off. That was a huge number and that's where the registers sprayed down and, you know, but they've been, you know, they've been hiring more people. Actually heard that the visitation to Buncombe County is actually already back up to where it was just two or three years ago now, even though there's been like no advertising. And I think that's, it was very reliable. So, so some of that's coming back, you know, like the tourism visitation is coming back pretty strong. But it doesn't, but if the restaurants can't be fully open, they must still just be, I mean, the employment must be just way down on that still. But I'd love to learn more, so.
Is there a way to benchmark that with other towns that rely on tourism? Because when the tier rankings came out, I looked at some of the beach towns and it looked like they were having a little bit quicker recovery in terms of the industry. So I'm just curious, is there any way that you can find out what is the difference?
Yeah, so we, we could certainly pull that and pull some comparisons. I will tell you from looking at the markets that this data set had available, we are somewhat of an anomaly in North Carolina. We are more severe than, than any other large metros we've ever seen. The cost of our, the tourism sector being food, you know, just a visitation center, it depends.
And so the one data point that I have heard about that is at the beach, that is usually very cyclical and it's usually just in the summer.
And it will decrease.
But we are year-round tourism destination. I'm just a few months out here.
I'd like to see those numbers too on the African-American community.
And so I, and this is where it gets tricky in terms of using our data sources is I don't know to what degree at this local level that is overlaid. We were actually, we're involved this weekend in North Carolina Local Government Budgeting Association Conference. Somebody actually asked that exact question. Mecklenburg County has a staff economist and even he, you know, his full-time job is looking at some of this information. He said, you know, unfortunately, we don't have specific data that isolates these, these same metrics by demographic data. But we can kind of combine the two and know what we've seen in aggregate. So at that local level, we'll have to look further and see what we can, we can bring back to you.
This is great, thank you. And two questions as one is, it would be helpful to have some analysis around why we are an outlier in terms of slower recovery? And I would love to continue to track this data as new data comes available, sort of as we think about the runway of the next six months. The second thing is, I think just, it feels like we've sort of been having two buckets of conversation. This one and then the conversation about how we're responding to needs around eviction and food insecurity, childcare needs, which presumably there's a lot of overlap between the, you know, let's group the 40.6% in the, in the lower two tiers of earning here and the people who are having the most critical needs. But I think to me, as we, as we think about the, the remainder of this fiscal year and then presumably the start of the new fiscal year, understanding in as sharp detail as we can, who the people are behind these numbers and what their needs are and how we are best responding. And then also anticipating sort of what the next wave of needs is going to be. I think that's a piece that makes this, this whole year sort of challenging is that the needs keep changing. And even as we develop pretty robust responses to one set of needs, there's, you know, as some schools continue to be virtually for longer and longer and longer, new needs are emerging for working class and lower income families as they're struggling to sustain. So I'd just like to sort of flag those as two related requests as we move forward.
One other question because my radio is, do we have a sense for? Like how many people would be back at work if the schools were, were open? Because I mean, in my sense of there's just a lot of people because their kids aren't home, they just can't go back to work right now. They just can't leave their little kids at home. So in a way it's like, like are some sectors actually having trouble finding people because like there's so many people who are not in the position to go back to work because of the, the school's still not being fully functional.
It's a, it's a great question. I see Tim Love is nodding his head. I don't have the specific data to support that, but it's a pretty good hypothesis.
I think anecdotally, we know that certain industries, whether the wage that works, the risk or not needed, your child. Obviously, there's a lot of that. One of the challenges we face is for something like total employment or unemployment, we have really good standard government data sets. You have Bureau of Labor Statistics, tax. In areas like the, which are white zones, which are slumming up, who's hiring? There is a standard data set. It's actually very available. If we're asking who's hiring, it's literally, let's look at B and then let's ask employers who may not even list their jobs on website. That's one of the challenges we face with the data. The best data is, most of them are already data. But that said, I think there are ways, as Rex said, that we can look at some of these questions and tell them our part.
So I'll move us past the labor market and unemployment. And so if I had to summarize that group of metrics, there's some concern there, obviously. The recovery is, is quick, but not full. So as we look to some other metrics, and I'll start with construction permanent value, we'll see again, mixed signals. So this graph is the three-month moving average of permitted value. So what that means when we say three-month moving average is the average construction permit value for each month over the last three months. When I say permitted value, that means the, of all the permits that we've issued in Buncombe County, the total value of those construction projects. It's a, it's kind of a representation of building, construction activity. So the three-month moving average helps us smooth out some of our, our natural occurring spikes month over month and helps us to really focus on the trends in this data set. When you look here, you see that February, kind of before our lockdown, we were at a three-month moving average of about $35 million. So the last three months, the average monthly permitted value is 35 million. Again, this is, this is going to be a metric that's seasonal, so this isn't seasonally adjusted. We'd expect, you know, construction starts in winter to be a little bit lower. But then you see, we are now here up into August, September, October. August, we peaked at $56 million and in October, our, our three-month moving average was 54 million. Now think about this, this starts at January 2019 over here. Kind of see the, you know, through a year, you see kind of that seasonal trend and then you see COVID happens. Looking at trends in this graph, there's not a noticeable impact of COVID other than it continues increasing. So I just showed you unemployment and labor market where we see some concerns in that group of metrics. But here we are with construction activity and I don't see a noticeable impact in the data set that says construction completely stopped. Part of that is with this three-month moving average. If, if on one month it did stop temporarily, I've kind of smoothed that out. But there's nothing here in this data that's showing us that construction activity has taken a large pause. So that's overall construction. Now we kind of move that into real estate. And I want to introduce you tools, concepts called the Realtor, it's the Realtor.com produces this, it's the market hotness index. What this metric does is it really looks at fast-moving supply and rising demand. So it takes the entire US and it says there's a scale of zero to 100. Above 50, that's hot, it's warm, people want to be there. They've got a lot of supply that's moving faster. They've got a lot of people that really want to be in that area. The low 50 is, is cool. People are coming from those markets, moving into the hotter markets. And specifically, I want to show you the demand score. So there's the supply side as well as the demand score. I think the demand score illustrates something we've all probably heard, but it validates that with data. So I'll show you, this is this value since January 2018. Be mindful of the Y-axis starts at 50. So this entire chart shows that our demand here is a warm market. People want to live in Buncombe County. You see COVID here, you know, January, February, March falls a little bit, April spikes, but really since May, we've gone from around 60 to over 75. The warm demand for real estate in Buncombe County is heating up. It's in line with what we've seen in the construction permanent value metric, but overall, it's an important thing to be aware of as we look at all of these in aggregate. So we saw some concern in our unemployment labor market data, some of our construction, real estate. We see increasing, so you know, favorable attributes in terms of local economic health. But you really have to start to combine all of these and think together at that holistic picture. And the next two metrics I want to show you, try to relate this back to our budget. So Chairman Newman, you asked earlier about sales tax. That's where I want to take us first and then I'll come to property tax. Sales tax likely is our revenue that's most directly impacted by the state of the local economy. It's directly attributable to business activity and what's going on in the economy. And property tax obviously is our largest revenue source. So to orient everyone, sales tax, the way we set our sales tax budget each year, we use an annual growth trend. Historically, if we see 3% annual growth, we'll take last year's value, we'll add 3%. The challenge with sales tax is the data has a three-month lag from the state. It's the month you, you pay for your goods, the next month the business distributes that fund to the state and then it comes back from the state to local municipalities. So we're always looking back even further than some of this, this labor market data. So for FY 2020, so the last fiscal year, we use 2019 as a baseline. So this red line here represents 2019 at 100%. So that's where we were for 2019. We set a baseline expecting that in aggregate, we would be a little bit above that. So 2020 comes along, we start off a little bit higher than 2019 when we look at monthly receipts. Then we're in line with 2019. See a spike in January, a big spike in February. A lot of this is timing driven. That's actually before we announced any stay-at-home orders, so that likely wouldn't have an effect from COVID. And then March is really when we, when we first announced our stay-at-home order. And you see for March, it's the first month where we dipped significantly below FY 2019. And then April is our trough here and then May and June, we get closer back to that 2019 amount. Now mind you, I said there's a three-month lag in this data set. We were coming to you as a board with this, with this information in March, April, May, only having at the latest point up till January and February. Having, hearing these news stories that said uncertainty is the new certainty or uncertainty on this minus 35% GDP and saying, where are we going to be in sales tax trying to have the crystal ball figure this out? So that's where we, we talked to each of you about, you know, at your budget sessions, we talked about where we were going to set the FY 21 budget. We, again, we were here, we had January, we were sitting here in April setting this budget. So we assumed what, what we had forecasted for April was actually lower than this. So we said, you know, we'll start the year minus 75%. Throughout the year, it'll get a little bit better. And then about mid-year, we'll cross over 2019 and we'll get to a point where we end up at the end of the year, we're, we're overall better. But in, in aggregate, we're about the same as our 2019. So far, we have three months of this data. What we see here is this green line with these triangles. July was almost identical to FY 20, August almost identical to FY 20 and September a little bit above FY 20 last year. This is our projection down here. We are much higher at this point in the year than where we expected to be with where we set our budget. That's, that's good news. Overall, business activity, sales tax is performing better than what we were forecasting. Now I'll, I'll tell you that this is highly dependent on business activity. If we have additional stay-at-home orders, additional travel restrictions, what happens to this metric? But there could be a point where, as we get more data, we would need to come back to you in the middle of the year, once we have six months of data, and say, this is higher than what we had planned. We have an opportunity for a budget amendment to bring more revenue in. Obviously, that still is highly dependent on what happens over these next three months. We only have July, August, September. We saw in beach communities, a lot of travel in the summer still. We know that we have that here. But again, when we look at these metrics together, when we saw unemployment and labor market, this is not the story I would have predicted. But this story likely tells you, people are coming to Buncombe County. People are vacationing here, doing it in a safe manner, and continuing to, to spend their, their dollars in Buncombe County. But it's, it's an important metric. It's a reflection, a pretty good reflection of the, of the local economy. But in general, or at least its consumer spending patterns. But in general, it is, it is a three-month lag which presents a challenge. So the final metric I want to show you.
It's interesting that the economy can produce that, all of that activity, that the employee, the employment is not there. Like, the, the economic output is there, but the employment is, is so much lower.
Exactly. So, and that's where it's, it's, so.
There's probably two stories. There's the story of the people who are doing just as well as they were, even a little better. And then there's a story of the people who are struggling a ton. And, and I think, at least that's a frame through which I understand not just this data, but sort of all the anecdotal pieces and through which I would think about policy makers. You know, it's sort of holding both those things. Luckily, this is enabling us to be in a stronger financial position than we might have anticipated. But I, you know, I don't, I, I think the story I really want to understand a lot more about is how are those, you know, represented in that 40% dip on unemployment or unemployment, and what's happening to them right now?
If you make 12, 50 an hour, what is your impact on our sales tax?
Right. And you're not building in addition, and you're not buying a new house.
Yeah.
And, you know, so that's, this is great, but I think that's sort of our challenge together is to push through into an analysis that maybe doesn't synthesize this so much as hold two things at once.
And I will tell you, among economists, at the beginning of the stay-at-home orders nationwide, there was a lot of talk of a V-shaped recovery. We've got to bottom out and then jump back up. And that, that narrative has shifted more in terms of labor market and unemployment to a K-shaped recovery. Potentially, you fall, your jobs that need to be replaced and come back, go back up, and those lower-wage, lower-skill jobs would go down. And so that's kind of, that's something that is being talked about a lot in research right now. But I, I haven't seen kind of a holistic review at that, at that more local level, so it's something we'll follow up on.
Thanks. That's super interesting.
Something just, very quickly to your point, for sure. You know, some people, if you ask how the economy is doing, they're looking at stock market behavior. On the other side of that is sort of the unemployment or low-wage jobs. So there's very, there are literally two stories. But other item I know of that is that, I was at a session before this meeting, they were talking about projections at the state level. So the states seem to be saying that we're saying, it's projected as a $5 billion revenue pool. And as they subtract along, they're, they're under a billion right now. So I just put that out there to say that everyone was projecting, okay? Getting hammered in this process, not just Buncombe County, protection, but.
Do, do we know, I mean, you know, this whole trend, of course, of like, people purchasing stuff through Amazon rather than going to the store, since like a big societal trend even before COVID, which just got blown up, right? I mean, is there something that going on here too? I mean, I'm just still struck by, like, the, like, the restaurants and the retail, like, there's all these people not working there anymore. But the sales revenue is, like, is recovered. I mean, is, is part of this, like, people just buy stuff online and paying the local sales tax, but like, nobody in our community got employed by them?
Absolutely, it could be. And, and that's, as you pay online, you, that sales tax still ends up coming to us. So it becomes this question of, of what's going on. I think Commissioner Sloan, it's a, it's a good point of, you know, what impact to our overall sales tax base is each individual. Someone who makes a little less is probably less of an impact to this total amount in general. So, and, and we would expect that tourism, travel is going to be an impact to our sales tax base, consumer spending, given the nature of our local economy. So I think all of those are at play in terms of, you know, I, I, again, in March, we, we didn't see, you know, we didn't have nearly as many people coming as we would expect. Virtually no outside travel, March, April. But yet, this is only minus 78% in April. Was that some of that pandemic buying, that stocking up? Not certain, but it's, it's something to explore, difficult to get a clear answer to. So I want to be mindful of time because we're here on the economic overview. I've got one more, and then we'll go to our financial outlook. But our largest, our largest revenue is property tax. And we've, we've been in touch almost daily with our tax collector in terms of what, what is she seeing? What's actually happening? The way we, we set our property tax budget, we get our value estimates from our tax assessor, who you'll hear from later today. We look at our historical collection rate, and North Carolina general statute only allows us to budget what we received in the prior year, collection rate, based on this year's values. Historically, we've been budgeting 99.75% collection. We've had great success. Jennifer Pike has done a fantastic job. Economy's good, people are able to pay. But this year, we worked with her to refine that, lower that collection percent to 99.0%. So with that, we would expect that as we go through the year, we would, we would see lower collection at each point in time as a, as an overall percent. The challenge becomes a, the vast majority of our, our property taxes collected November, December, January. So it's still a little bit too early to use this as a reliable indicator of where we kind of use stuff in, in, into the year. That's why I mentioned with sales tax, we need a little bit more data. We really need to know where are we with the bulk of our property tax collection before we can make a, a more refined projection on our revenues of what we received this year. So again, for this year, we were at 99.0% collection. Last year, we were at 99.75. Through November 30th, so this is looking at property tax, not including registered motor vehicles. Through November 30th of last year, we were at 44.15%. That was our collection rate. This year, through November 30th, we were at 43.91%. So a 24 basis point lag. Again, we, we set our collection rate behind about 75 basis points. So we're a little bit behind. We, we expected that, but no alarms right now. But it's a little bit too early to, to, you know, say this is a, a big win. I will say, to get to last year's collection rate, we would have had about, need to have about additional $500,000 in property tax collections in November. So overall, you can have an idea of the magnitude there. But I, I just have to reiterate, it's a little bit too early for this to be a clear indicator. And, and we'll know more about the impact on different populations as we, as we really see what happens. People aren't likely to be motivated to pay early if they're in a financial challenge. So what's going to happen as that data comes in through December and January? So that is the end of our metrics. I'll leave a little bit of time here at the end for questions, but I just will tell you again, uncertainty is the new certainty, at least for the next several months, probably the remainder of fiscal year 2021. We see mixed signals throughout, and in the Budget Office, we continue to look at these to try to develop precise recommendations for you all of what's happening now, but also where we head.
All right. Any other questions that I, we were, asked some of them a long way. Any other questions folks have?
All right. So I'm going to flip to the next one, but while I do that, if you need a refill on your drink, go ahead and get that. Albert said, not allowed to leave the room, not allowed to leave your seat. All right. Back. So I introduced that last section. Don, Don has shown us where we've been. Jennifer's talked about where we've, we are. I've added to a little bit about the economic overview. And this is the start of our pivot to where we're headed. We got there a little bit in that education discussion. But really, it's starting to look at what is our, our projection look like? Where are we headed? And where does this board want to go as we start the FY 22 planning process? I will tell you, the financial outlook is something that the Budget Office prepares every year. It's normally included in the annual budget document that gets reviewed by the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA. It's really one of their best practices. It helps guide your strategic direction as it helps you think about a decision made today, what's the future impact of that? I will tell you, I will preface that an outlook is a, is a projection built on assumptions. It's not a crystal ball, but it tries to tell you where we're headed based on what's known today. And so what we wanted to do is walk you through those assumptions of, of how we develop this and show you kind of how this is developed, and then give you really an entry point into the FY 22 planning process. So an overview of, of this segment, we'll start with expenditures. We'll, I'm going to talk through a little bit of classification. We'll talk through foundational or strategic plan priorities and, and talk through some specifics there. Then we'll go to revenue. We'll then combine the two and do a financial outlook. And then I'm going to give you a little bit of an update on budget-related things that happened in a reappraisal year before I turn it over to Keith to give you an update on the reappraisal. So Sam, who you heard from earlier, likes to ask the question, how do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. So when we look at our financial outlook, we are going to look at this one bite at a time. It's a, it's a proverbial pie with multiple slices. For the purposes of, of this presentation and, and the financial outlook, we have classified our expenditures into two categories, foundational and strategic plan priorities. I will, I will tell you, the foundational area is not aligned to the foundational focus area of the county's strategic plan. It's, it's more the, I'll show you recurring or one-time areas, things that we're always doing as accounting. We've tried to pull out those projects or programs directly related to the strategic plan. So that way, it's easier to discuss those, highlight those, and also talk about those in the context when we get to structural balance. So the first area that we have, and I'll go through these and describe them, and then we'll actually see the, the numbers. The first is our foundational recurring. So this is our routine annual commitment. So salaries and benefits that we pay to employees, that's a, something we're always going to do. It's a recurring expense. We have operating expenses, education, which we discussed earlier, so the payments to school systems, and our debt service obligations. So when we approve a new project and then pay that, that principal and interest payments. When we think about foundational one-time, these are one-time appropriations. It's a truly one-time expense. So a capital pay-go project that we pay in cash in a given year. IT software projects, vehicles. Even though we might buy vehicles each year, the actual purchase of the individual vehicle is a one-time expense. And then other, other ad hoc needs, which may be grants or carryforwards, which Jennifer talked about earlier. And then the, the third classification we have here is really community. So within the strategic plan priorities, it's the annual commitment to our, our strategic plan or community-focused areas within the strategic plan. So affordable housing, conservation easements, early childhood education, greenways. And I'll go through those in more detail when we get to that section. But overall, classifying this way helps us isolate trends in, in each area. One bite at a time, one slice of the pie at a time, we'll start with foundational recurring. When we look at foundational recurring, it's $330 million or 96% of our budget. It's the vast majority of what we do, the way we've classified it here. And I'm showing you here FY 20 amended, or so FY 20's budget to actual, where we ended our budget versus our actual expenditures, and then FY 21 amended. It's important to do that. The budget to actual for last year gives you some context. That's where we ended our expense, our, our spending. Also, we can talk through why. And then looking through our amended budget, that's our plan for this year, what we expect to spend. So when you look at our FY 20, 21 amended budget, and, and I'll, the amended budget for FY 20 is there really just to show you that context. When I describe these, I'll really talk through the difference in where we were last year, actuals versus where we are in amended budget this year. When we look at salaries and benefits, we see a significant increase from actuals to amended. That includes, we had a cost of living adjustment applied last year, April 1st, for all employees, 2.31%. Includes contributions to health insurance, includes our, an increase in our state retirement contribution for employees. We had nine physicians moved internal from contracted services, now internal as part of our justice services department. And then we also had some emergency services physicians, part of that in the amended budget through some grant dollars. When we look at our, our other operating expenses, excuse me. In FY 2020, we had a, essentially a non-essential spending freeze. Travel and training was stopped mid-March. And, and if you didn't need something then, hey, let's, you know, take a break, let's not purchase it. So you saw there that FY 20 operating budget to actual came in about $6 million less. But we understand why that is because of, of the reality of what was going on. And so then you see the amended budget is now 47.9 million for operating expenses. Program support included a $1.8 million increase to education, primarily our K-12 partners. And then also a $700,000 increase in pass-through revenue. So expenses and revenue included together offsetting, so that's part, part of the increase within Health and Human Services. Debt shown here includes our current obligations. I will point out that what's shown here for FY 21 amended includes the recently approved project for solar on public facilities. The thought with that classification is while it is a community strategic plan focus area, directly related, because it's now in our debt, it's really part of our foundational expenses because we've committed to that debt service. So it's shown here, and I'll, I'll come back to that when we talk about that section.
Although there's a corresponding reduction in operating expenses.
I don't know that that would be for FY 21 operating expenses.
Because the build-out takes longer than that.
And then transfers out, you see a reduction for FY 21 amended. We have a lower cost to transportation for some of those services provided. And also because this is the reappraisal year, the transfer to the reappraisal reserve fund is lower in the final year of that cycle. So I've shown here FY 20 amended, FY 20 actual, FY 20 21 amended. That FY 20 amended column's going to go away. We've talked about where we've been, where we are, shown here, and now it's time to talk about where are we going, our projection. So you see here 20 actuals, 21 amended, 22 projected, and 23 projected. So 21 amended was a 5% increase over 20 actual. We talked a little bit as to why that, that was. 22 projected is a 2% increase, or $7.3 million for this category over 21 amended. And then another 2% in FY 23, or 6.4% increase, or 6.4 million dollar increase, excuse me. So what's included in FY 22? We include a 1% cost of living adjustment based on the personnel ordinance, calculating as of December 30th. We've included that for, for, for capturing that. For 23, we included 2% cost of living. We assume that if the economic recovery continues, that, that metric would increase. Both years have an increased state retirement contribution based on the state schedule. We bring back into the budget other post-employment benefits. Last year, when, when the state home, home orders started, our financial outlook looked more challenging. We took a pause on making that transfer for other post-employment benefits. It's not our desire long-term, so we bring that $2 million expense back into the budget. Each year includes a 2.5% increase for operating expenditures. And Chairman Newman, to your question, this would be, or to your point about solar, this would be a net increase. So if there's savings related to solar, that would kind of get baked in. So it might be an actual increase of 2.6% because of those savings. But that's overall operating would expand to, expand 2.5%. 3% increase is a placeholder for overall education. We have a placeholder for new debt as, as our comprehensive facility assessment comes out, as our, and as our capital review team continues to work on their recommendations to the county manager and to you. And then we include in the transfers out category, 1.5 million for transportation for the expected costs in 22 and 23, and 250,000 in the transfer for, already talking about our next reappraisal, which is the reappraisal reserve fund for the, the following cycle. That's what's included, but it's also important to acknowledge what's not included. This does not include any new positions. We know departments might request new positions this year. We know departments might request new positions this year. This does not include new programs or initiatives that require significant expansions. Again, there likely will be requests for that, but this is based on what we know today, trying to come up with a realistic projection based on our existing budget. And we'll come back to then the other two categories and talk through those of, again, what's included, what's not, and why we've made those assumptions. But any questions here on foundational recurring expenditures? All right. So the next slice of our pie, it's a little bit smaller. That was 96% of our budgets. It's going to be significantly smaller, is our foundational one-time. So if you look here, again, FY20 budget to actual and then FY21 budget, you see some interesting trends here. Capital outlay being at 0.2 million in FY20 actuals and now 1.4 million. That's largely driven by a change in budgeting practice. Previously, before FY21, vehicles were moved to the capital projects fund as a capital project. It's kind of a bucket, all these vehicles. We're now paying for those out of capital outlay, even though there is debt financing for that. It's just a change in the budgetary practice, so that's why it looks like a jump, but overall it's about flat. Contingency there, you see go from 0 to 1 million. You do see some in the FY20 amended budget. Contingency is a budgetary technique, is a placeholder for unplanned expenditures. We don't actually expend out of the contingency budget. We would expend out of where the funds are needed, notify the board of the use of contingency dollars, so you would never actually see actuals there. So that's, again, kind of a budget technical aspect. And then transfers out is shown for capital pay-go IT projects and carryforwards. As part of reductions for the 21 budget, we postponed capital pay-go in most IT projects, so that's why you see that, that reduction there. So this is where we've been, where we are. Now let's look at where we're going. So you see 20 actual, 21 amended, 22 projected, and 23 projected. There's a 95% increase in 21 amended versus 20 actuals. Again, that's largely budgetary process-driven, based on the contingency dollars. And then you see for 22 projected, a 39% increase, and for 23, basically flat to FY22. FY22 includes $250,000 for capital outlay. So these are non-capital projects, but building repairs, maintenance, things like that. It includes $1.5 million for vehicles, so that would be all county vehicles. And then $1.3 million for pay-go capital and IT. That's about $800,000 currently on our CIP for pay-go capital, and then a $500,000 placeholder for IT software projects. We do know that requests are significantly higher than that, but that's currently what's planned. So what's not included in this section is significant increases to vehicles. 1.5 million, that's all chairlifts, vehicle replacement, ambulances, general services vehicles. There's no significant increases either for pay-go capital or any increases, significant increases for contingencies. All right. So that's our first two of our three categories for our expenditures. The third is strategic plan priorities. And I want to spend a bit of time before I show you the numbers, that, just to illustrate, this is used as a tool for us to classify expenditures and have this conversation with you. It's really focusing on the programs or projects that are easily identified as related to the strategic plan. So you will see affordable housing, you'll see conservation easements, early childhood education, greenways, economic development, strategic partnership grants, including Isaac Coleman and Tipping Point. But I've already touched on a little bit, you won't see the recently approved solar project in this section because that's now in debt. So I use this as an example of this list is not exhaustive necessarily. If there's a particular area you've identified is very focused on the strategic plan, but again, it helps us as we get towards that conversation of our long-term financial outlook. So you can see here our FY20 amended, FY20 actuals, and our FY2021 amended. Affordable housing is flat at about $2.31 million for 20 and 21. Conservation easements, it's rounded here, but they actually increased from $150,000 in FY20 to $240,000 in FY21. Early childhood was a 2% increase. The total is actually $3.67 million in FY21. Some of you I know are familiar that a portion of that is part of the Asheville City Schools' local current expense for the Asheville preschool, but the total early childhood education in 20 was the $3.6 million, and then adding 2% in FY21. Economic development at $2.2 million in FY21. The bulk of that increase goes back to the carryforward Jennifer talked about. Greenways, we decreased from $450,000 to $334,000. A lot of that was driven by NCDOT funding streams. I'll come back to that when we get to the projection, we start to bring some of that back into the outlook. And then strategic partnership grants, including Isaac Coleman and Tipping Point. It's not actually an increase, it was a reallocation of $300,000 from a different cost center over to this pot. So that's why you see the trends you do here, but an overall increase in budget as well as budget over actuals.
What is that?
That is the, I believe, the funds available to the subcommittee as well as the commitments for affordable housing.
It's basically funding projects primarily. I mean, there's some, looks like reconstruction projects, and then there's some stuff like emergency home repair programs are funded through that. So all the different things we do to keep people in housing or build new apartments, basically.
What's your preference in terms of the flow of today? Is this what you'd like us to sort of talk about some of this multi-year funding, or do you prefer we wait till later?
Just give us a little bit.
Sounds good.
So this is a look at where we were, where we are, and now we start to look at our forecast. So FY21, again, that was a 21% increase over 20 actuals, largely driven by that economic development, carryforward. In FY22, we're at a 27% increase, or 2.5 million. And in FY23, based on this outlook, is nearly flat. Components of that, affordable housing is flat in both years. Conservation easements increased 25% to $300,000 for each year. A total of 300 in 22, that's the 25% increase, then flat in 23. Early childhood education continues at a 2% increase each year. Planned economic development incentives, the general fund cost of those, so that does include Project Ranger Pratt &amp; Whitney. Greenways, this goes back to kind of our prioritized plan.
Just on economic development, is that kind of like status quo, but with Pratt and Whitney layered in?
Yes. Greenways, we've worked with Peyton O'Connor on a prioritized plan of what that looks like. This brings back into the assumptions of the NCDOT fund. We'll continue to look through that as part of our capital review process, so if there's any changes, we would bring that in the budget development. And then strategic partnerships, which again includes Isaac Coleman, Tipping Point, that's flat for both years. Now, again, I've been saying what's not included. Not included here is any additional increases to these four significant investments above and beyond in these programs, or any new community priorities that aren't either included in the foundational budget or portion. So there's four breakdown components of this budget. We're through three of them. Now we're at the other half, and that is revenue. I will tell you that with respect to the revenue budget, timing matters of when we set that 21 budget or the next fiscal year. So if there are any indicators midway through the year, we would come back to you to talk through those and what might need to be brought into the budget. So same table I've been showing you, FY20 amended, FY20 actual, and FY21 amended. Overall, our revenue is $327 million, that's 97, or 96% of our expenditures. The remainder is the appropriated fund balance. Our property tax, actuals versus amended, included natural growth, even at a lower collection percentage. Our intergovernmental revenue is largely pass-through revenues that are driven by expenses, so it's just a formulary calculation there. Sales tax, I've walked through those projections, we have altered those. That may be an area where we can explore further refinement as we get more information. Sales and services were budgeted flat. Other financing sources includes our Article 46 transfer, grant funds. Other taxes includes heavy equipment, privileged license, rental car, video programming revenue. One that's also included here, and the big driver of the reduction, is our deed stamp excise tax. So a portion of all deeds are, they pay the excise tax. We have some flexibility on those expenditures. We expected that revenue to reduce. So far, the trends are actually showing the opposite. It has not had a noticeable impact. Because some of those funds are restricted to be remitted by the state, that's an area where we would definitely have to come back to you so that we have available expenditure budget, which is a percentage of that revenue, to be able to make that payment to the state. Permits and fees were reduced due to expectations based on COVID. Other income includes indirect costs from other funds, like solid waste fund. Investment earnings significantly down, interest rates are significantly down. Again, timing matters as we set these. We set the budget April, May, not knowing for sure what the long-term effects of COVID were going to be. So as I transition us from where we've been to where we are, I'm going to take you to where we're going. I will go ahead and emphasize that for illustrative purposes here, we've modeled it at our existing tax rate. We know that in a reappraisal year, we'll review the tax rate, but we have modeled this at the existing 52.9 cents, just to give you a picture of what this looks like. So in FY21, we saw a $1.9 million increase over 20 actuals, budget versus actuals, 1%. And then we see in 22, $4.4 million. Property tax, we've included an increase due to revaluation, and then in FY23, a 3% annual growth rate, just as a placeholder for natural growth. Intergovernmental is flat. Again, it's largely dependent on expenditures. Sales tax, we include at 3% a year, based on FY21 amended budget. Again, this is an area where we might come back to you, depending on what we actually see. But that's an area where, as the economy recovers a year or two from now, we might see sales tax to grow a little more, a little better. Sales and services, we've included a 2% increase each year. Other financing, planned amounts for our other financing sources. And then other taxes includes our permits and fees, other income, or all three of those are at 2% each year. What's not included here, again, change in the tax rate or a significant increase to sales tax, two of our very large revenue drivers. But when we set up this projection, it's based on what we know today, and we have to pick some assumptions to make that forecast. So that's kind of where we're looking in terms of revenue, based on this set of assumptions. Any questions on revenue before we bring it all together? All right. So financial outlook. Before I can really get into the combined look, Jennifer made a comment earlier about structural balance, so that I'd revisit that. And so it's a question of, first, what is a balanced budget? And according to the local government fiscal control act, the balanced budget is the sum, where the sum of estimated net revenues and appropriated fund balance is equal to appropriations. Your expenses equal your revenue plus what you pull from fund balance. But what is our goal? And it gets back to this idea of structural balance. And that's where one-time revenue, which includes your appropriated fund balance, would be, would not exceed your one-time expenses. Things that aren't recurring pay for the expenses that aren't recurring, but we're not relying on one-time revenue sources to fill the gap long-term. So keeping that in mind, I'll come back to that point as I show you the financial outlook. So to recap, I'll first just kind of summarize our overall expenses. You've seen each piece. You see FY20, we're at $323 million in actuals. FY2021, we're at $342 million in our amended budget. 22 projected takes us to $352.9, and 23 projected takes us to $359.3. When we then add in revenue to this, you see that in 20, we contributed to our fund balance of $2.1 million. In 21, we budgeted $14.9 fund balance. In 22, we've, we're at $3.4 million in appropriation of fund balance. And that's important because we've achieved structural balance. So this 3.4, that's our one-time revenue, what we can assume, is less than our one-time expenses of $4.1 million. So shown here with these assumptions and this outlook, we've achieved that structural balance piece. And then in FY23, we're again using $3.4 million in fund balance, and again, that's less than our one-time expenses, so some of our recurring revenues covering those one-time expenses.
Does that mean that, I mean, are you saying that you predicted when we get into those budget years, that the budgets for those years will actually only forecast $3.4 million?
That's based on the assumptions we used today. That was based on the assumptions. So this was, again, no new positions, no expansions, no increase of anything. This is just a base budget at this point in time. But we do know that you're going to have to add, like, we only have a 3% increase for schools. We had no, the 2% increase for early childhood, but no other expansions. So when you start expanding that, if you click, if you click, click to your next slide, when you start adding, then we can say, well, what percentage of fund balance do you want to use above that base 3.4%?
And what you're saying in 23 will go below 15%?
So based on these assumptions, non-significant expansions on the expense side, maintaining our existing tax rate, some other items with revenue, this outlook, yes, we would. And that's, that's kind of the next advance here. You see we ended 20 at 22.4%. If we use the full fund balance budgeted in 21, we'll end at 16.8%, 22 would end at 15.3, and in 23, that will go to 15%. Now, it's, a couple of things to keep in mind with this is, when you think about your fund balance policy being 15%, that's going to grow each year as your expenditures grow, so some of that has to be moved into that increase by policy.
Do we have any sense for where we might lay it in terms of use for those? Not yet.
Not yet. And that goes back to the fact that we haven't yet received all of our property tax coming in, so we don't know where that's going to come in. Sales tax, we only got three months of sales tax, so we don't yet know what June 30 would look like.
I guess one thing I would also say, if you're looking at 20, you know, the general fund, I think, received, and I'm looking at Dawn, it was $2.7 or $2.9 million in federal care spending. So if you look at what we contributed to fund balance, if we hadn't had that infusion of federal care spending, we would have used a small portion of fund balance in 20. I mean, that just kind of, you know, our effort is to continually try to work to refine expenditure budgets and maximize to the best of our ability our revenue budgets, so that we are getting much closer to what I would term as a break-even point, like what you're finishing here.
Where we won't be each year forecasting this massive fund balance utilization and then not, and then not even having one, or even making one. Or something like that, it's just how it's been normal for so, so long, and it's always been the most perplexing and kind of hard of a budget process is to forecast for large fund balance allocation, then even not requiring it. But you're saying the goal is to really narrow those numbers, so when we see a number, it's like, you know, we really might spend this.
Get that structural balance.
You talk about structural balance, that's really the goal.
Okay, great.
What's your chance?
And you see the fund balance percentage, and then just for context, because I know it helps relate, we talked through, we're going to have to transition into reappraisal, but what's the value of a penny? And if we think through with this forecast, it's still preliminary to know for sure, but in 20 actuals, $3.1 million, 21 amended, about $4 million, then that increases to almost $4.5, and then a little more than $4.5 million in 22 and 23. Still preliminary, but just trying to give you some, a frame of reference there as you think through. This is kind of the base forecast, and then where would we start pulling the levers from there? So with that note, real quickly, go over some budget-related things with reappraisal before I turn it over to Keith. Each year there of a reappraisal, there are some budget-related responsibilities that we have to bring before you. And the first is that we have to calculate the revenue-neutral tax rate. You might think, what is revenue-neutral? Well, according to statute, the rate that is estimated to produce revenue for the next fiscal year equal to the revenue that would have been produced for the next fiscal year by the current tax rate if no reappraisal. equal to the revenue that would have been produced for the next fiscal year by the current tax rate if no reappraisal had occurred. What tax rate did you need to get the same amount of revenue? It's relatively simple. I'm going to walk you through an example, but it's something that we would, we would calculate. Knowing that values have increased, what would your tax rate have been at these higher values? So I want to talk through an example. So we have example county. This is their current situation. And their property tax rate is 50.0 cents per $100. Their assessed value is $150 million in their entire community. And property tax revenue that is calculated, and this is going to take you back to high school algebra, I apologize. But it is your property tax base divided by 100 times your tax rate, so 50 cents, 0.50 dollars. They're really just 750,000. So they've gone through their reappraisal. And they have learned from their tax assessor that their reassessed value is $175 million. So it's increased by 1/6, 25 million. And an important point when you calculate revenue-neutral is the historical annual tax-based growth. So the state allows you to add in, what are you historically growing in? And so they've historically grown at 3% every year. And so to calculate their revenue-neutral tax rate, they'll kind of do this process in reverse. They'll take last year's revenue, multiply by 100. Remember, you got to multiply those sides by 100. Then they'll divide by the new assessed value, and they'll find that their revenue-neutral tax rate is 42.86%. The state allows them to add 3%, and so they can add 3% to that, and it gets them to 44.5%. We're taking you through this exercise today, this algebra, just to give you a preview. Come to you that way. You've seen it and kind of how the calculations make. It gets a little bit more detailed, taking obviously our actual data to do this, but overall, it's a relatively simple calculation. But with that, this concludes our financial outlook. We will come back to conversations about that long-term spending and prioritization. But if there are any questions before I hand it over to Keith for reappraisal, please let me know. All right. Thank you all for your time for two straight sessions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So let's start with, I want to go back and get a little bit of history, where we were at, where we came from, the new focus and route. So reappraisal 2021. So let's talk a little bit about first what reappraisal is. Reappraisal is appraisal, opinionated value of all parcels in the county. Now, I mention this because you may hear sometimes, and I hear some people ask me occasionally, is that, oh, reappraisal is that you just apply 5% of the values, and that's what the rules are, right? That's not true. Okay, that's not how we do it. Every, every single parcel in the county does receive its own independent value. It's just a matter of how we do it a little different. Buckland County uses a process known as mass appraisal. Mass appraisal is evaluation of groups of properties. And within Buckland County, we have 127,000 parcels that are broken down into about 2,000 different neighborhoods. We define neighborhoods by homogeneous properties or subdivisions or anything that's put together as far as space. We value those whole groups rather than individual homes. Like if you've had an appraisal on your home, that's an individual, but there's no way that we can do 127,000. So we put them together and do a mass appraisal process. So North Carolina General Statute requires counties to reappraise every eight years. That's the statute defines as the optimal plan unless the Board of Commissioners advances or other statutory triggers advance the report. So we mark, we use market data through December 31, 2020 must be considered. So we go right up until that last deed was filed, last day of the year, and consider every piece of that that we can get right on up into the first week of January to finalize all the valuations. Valuation will become effective January 1 of 2021. So why did Buckland County decide to advance the reappraisal? February 2019, Board of Commissioners adopted a resolution to conduct the reappraisal in 2021. So let's talk about why, let's get that. Projected assessment sale ratio would drop below 85%, which would trigger a North Carolina General Statute mandatory reappraisal. The assessment sale ratio was reported in April 2020 to be 83%. So assessment sale ratio, let's talk about that for a minute, but you're going to hear me mention that a lot, and we'll mention that a lot as we go forward into the future. What we do is we look at the, every sales price compared to every, their assessment. That creates the ratio for us. We report those to the state of North Carolina Department of Revenue every quarter, every sale that's on the list. They send us a random sample of deed numbers. We pull them out, random sample of the county to see where we're at on ratios. We report that to the Department of Revenue. So that, that ratio tells you then where your assessment is at compared to the sales price. If your home sold for $100,000, assessment was at an 80, and your ratio would be reported at 80%. So that's all the ratio is. It helps us understand where we're at in the market. Because the statute requires that you be at 100% of market value for the reappraisal date. So January 1, 2021, statute says we should be at 100% of market value. So we ended up for April 2020 to be at 83% on the sales ratio, just as we projected. We talked about advancing reappraisal that would be under 85%. And if you have not advanced the reappraisal at that time, and we had at the 83%, then you would be required from the state to do a reappraisal to be effective in the third year following that sales ratio was reported to. So it triggers it automatically by the statute, even after the board of directors decided to advance it. So North Carolina Department of Revenue reappraisal standard recommends counties conduct reappraisal if the sales assessment ratio is below 9%. So statute says 85%, below 85, it triggers a reappraisal. North Carolina Department of Revenue reappraisal standards says if it gets below 9, we are going to tell you that you should do a reappraisal. Not the statute, we're just going to recommend it to you that you should consider that. In equity and assessments due to the appreciating market. So this is where you've heard me say before is that reappraisal is about equalization. People get confused sometimes about reappraisal. They say, oh, well, you know, my taxes are going to go up. But that's not necessarily true, okay? Legislators never designed mechanism for profit tax in the state of North Carolina. Use reappraisal to generate additional profit tax. It's about equalization. When legislators designed that, they knew as different areas in your county appreciated at different levels, then this, this sales assessment ratio starts to not balance. And some people may be paying on 80% of their value, some people may be paying on 95% of that. So what you need to do in a reappraisal is equalize that, so you have no segments of the county that are carrying any larger burden of the tax burden to any other segments, okay? So that's really what reappraisal is about, with equalization. And that's what the inequity and the appreciating market statement there is about. Because in the appreciating market, as we are in Buckland County, you become unbalanced pretty quickly. And maintain public service value. So public service value, I'll just be real quick on that, is that the year after, the fourth year of a reappraisal, if your sales ratio is below 90%, then all public services, it's an adjustment in their value, okay? There's what that means. Public service is valued by the state and North Carolina Department of Revenue every year at market value. If that fifth year after reappraisal, your sales assessment ratio is below 90%, which we were at 83%, then the public service companies get an adjustment, and their taxable value down to 83%. So you would lose that, okay? If you didn't do the reappraisal, you'd lose value on the public service companies. So that's another good reason to keep in mind of the fourth year in an appreciation market, and appreciating market is pretty important. So a little example for you, history for ratio study and reappraisal cycle. What this is measuring is the actual sales assessment ratio. And you can see, we start here back in 2000, 2002, we hit that valley. We did the 2002 reappraisal, and we come back to the peak. And we keep doing the same thing. We go into 2006, reappraisal in 2006 brings us back to the peak. So we keep doing this because that's what happens in the appreciating market. Prices appreciate, but the assessments don't change, then this continues to evolve. So what you will see then at the end of this graph, if we had 2021 added on there, then you would see that come back up as another spike from after this reappraisal. So where are we at in the process? Based on market data and market trends, I recommended to you, we move forward with the reappraisal. You accepted that and adopted that in February 2019. Number two, the Board of Commissioners approved advancement reappraisal February 2019. Three, Board of Commissioners adopted the scheduled values, September 2020. So now we are at the appraisal. The appraisal staff is gathering information, analyzing market data. As I said earlier, we will continue to do that right up through this year. And then what's coming after that? The appraisal staff will determine the final value as of January 1, 2021. Citizens will receive their notice of valuation on the first week of February 2021. The appeal process will be open January 1, mid-April, which is required by statute. Assessor will generate profit tax notice delivered to the collector in July. So you can stick your ones, your constituents, and expect to receive their tax bill based upon their new valuation August. So a few things just for us to kind of discuss. You've already heard some of this today, and some of the things that we hear rest to talk about directly does affect what we do also, how we interpret the market. Commercial real estate market versus the real estate market for the reappraisal of 2021. Real estate, residential real estate. You know, it's, it's back to where I saw the market at back in 2008. We were getting that steep incline, and we went into the Great Recession. We are on that steep incline again, and the market is just one of the greatest times I've probably ever saw. So COVID did not affect the residential market that we can see in, okay? I think it did affect it in the other direction. Well, you know, we know that there's, we're moving now to Buckland County and Asheville from bigger metropolitan areas because they want to live in a smaller community like Asheville. So you're probably right, Chairman. It's that, it pushed us in the other direction. But most citizens feel like that COVID should have had a negative effect on us rather than a positive effect. So that's a little hard to understand if you're not in the market and you don't watch the market. Commercial real estate, a little different, but what we don't know there is that there's not a whole lot of data for us to look at. Now, what we do know is that we track a lot of trends going into reappraisal. Those trends are things like, I mean, vacancies we see in the retail restaurant businesses. I mean, and we see this closing, I mean, bankruptcies we see. We have access to be able to see some of the larger loans in the community. Are they 60, 90 days behind on their loans, which is an indicator of where they're at in the business? So we, we watched those trends over the past couple of years or past year just to see where all that's going. And I think the commercial real estate market is pretty flat. We haven't seen huge increases vacancy. We haven't seen a big shift. We don't believe in rates. We found no evidence of big lease changes, like giving concessions on the leases. Those are trends, and those are the things that we look for in absence of actual sales data to see where the commercial market is at. We do believe it's coming back quickly. We talked a little bit here today about the tourism market. We do believe the hospitality is coming back. We do see a few new restaurants opening up, but you do see some retail stores that are closing. So, but I ask you to keep in mind is that also some of those big retail stores that we see closing, were probably already retail stores that were struggling in the market. This kind of just pushed them over where they were at. So that's kind of where we're at in commercial. We will work with the citizens through the commercial the best that we can with the lack of data. There's not even a tremendous amount of national data. Commercial state investors just sort of put everything on hold and have not been moving around the market. So did COVID impact my new value? COVID will only impact your new value based on how impacted the market, okay? So we interpret the market. So whatever COVID did in the market is what your effect is. As we said, it probably affected the residential market in a positive way. So to do the fact, probably so. But we interpreted that for the market, not necessarily having COVID cases that we may have had. Affordable housing affected by reappraisal? Again, we don't set value, okay? We interpret the values, what people are paying every day in real estate transactions in this county is what sets the value of reappraisal. What I do know is that some of the lower-end properties, as far as on the value spectrum, are seeing quite a bit of an increase because that's affordable housing, okay? That's where a lot of people are going to to try and buy a house. And as you see, even manufactured single-wide and double-wide model homes. Most people just can't understand how you could have an appreciating manufactured home. Buckland County does. We have appreciating manufactured homes in this community. And you, you talk to other people across the state about that, or you go down the eastern part of the state where they sell lots of manufactured homes due to the military. And you know, the values just steadily decrease because it is a depreciating asset in their minds. That's where we go with this like ton of bill. That is not true for here, okay? And that's, that's one segment that we have saw in the last reappraisal and even going into this reappraisal, that we know that took a trip. So how do I, how do I set my new values? Everybody has the right to appeal. Every property owner has the right to appeal, starting that January 1 of any year. Not just the reappraisal year, but any year. So if you, if you get a call from somebody and they think something is wrong, your appeal process is about telling them what you think is wrong. Because I can tell you that I am very confident in the data that we have, and I'm very confident in what I've put out there for citizens. The one thing I don't always know is what is in your house that I don't know about. 99.9% of the homes in this county, we have never went in, okay? I don't know what's in their house. There's a lot of assumptions that we have to make. Do you have a finished basement? Sometimes I don't know, okay, unless you tell me. So if you have a value issue when you get that value, I encourage the citizens to file that appeal. And I think sometimes people think the word appeal means it has to be controversial, or it has to be, I'm coming to argue with you. And that's not it at all. I mean, we're not bad people. And the only thing we want to do is hear from you and understand the problem and help you fix the problem if we can. The citizen's got to step up and tell us what that's wrong with. So when you get the notice, we'll give instructions, and we'll even have residential ones, we'll even have the appeal form with them. You can go online and file that appeal. Many new tools that are available to the citizens to be able to do that and help them through that process. So I would, I'd encourage anybody to look at that. Questions?
All right. Thanks very much. Let's make, try to keep it short, so just like five minutes for real.
For real.
For real. For real.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Nice to be here and nice to meet you all. I don't think any of you have met me at this point. My name is Rafael Baptista. I'm the newest performance management director for Buckland County. So excited to be here. And the role of performance management is multiyear. But for purposes today, we help manage the infrastructure and coordination of Buckland County's twenty twenty five to two thousand twenty one, which is your roles, your vision for what Buckland County should be in twenty twenty five. So this conversation has really been focused on money, right? Where, what have we spent money on? What's our outlook look like? What's taxes look like? We're talking about it from a functional perspective, right? How much money do we spend on health and community services? How much do we spend on debt? For this conversation, we want to shift and focus a little bit from thinking about functions to thinking about strategic planning priorities. What outcomes? What priorities are you buying for money? What have you bought this year? And what are you hoping to buy in future years? This will help shape looking at what do we invest in for moving forward? So the conversations of the projects and the things you want to see funded, this is where we start having that conversation. I'm going to talk for a little bit and then it's going to be mostly you all talking and us taking notes and listening. And we're going to have a little interactive activity with the pink pieces of paper I put on everyone's desk there.
Down.
Come down.
Not the way of the one of both, the way of both.
I'm on the one. This one. So two slides, so can you just name them and we go Rusty on this one? So earlier Rusty talked about the budget and he talked about foundational investments versus the focus area, the community focus area investments. And then this is, I mean, mostly, most of the money was in foundational. I guess they put all of the salaries and benefits there. What the budget department did was they stepped further and said, okay, let's look at performance management, for example. What percentage of the performance management budget, salaries included, gets spent given the need on each of the focus areas? Right? So how much of health and community services? And this is the result for this year's budget. So you can see thirty percent of the funding still continues to go to support the foundational focus area. So you have forty three percent going to educating capable community. You have four percent goes to the fiber economy, thirty one percent to resident well-being, and two percent to environmental distortion. So this is how we look at this strategic plan, the budget for this fiscal year's broken happens. I'll add an important caveat of educating capable. Of course, you have to fund Buckland County schools, Ashville City schools, maybe tech. But with some of these, some discrepancies can be attributed to the nature of operations, right? If you look at resident well-being, sheriff's office runs the section facilities twenty four seven. More important, twenty four seven. So the same amount of focus in a resident well-being area costs currently requires significantly more funding than in some other focus areas that don't run twenty four seven operations. Don't have the sheer amount of FTEs required. So this is just an important reference here, right? So if you look at it, it's educating people, that's where we spend the most money. All by resident well-being, all by foundational, all by fiber, all by energy and environmental distortion. And then we'll move to the next slide. Which is, we asked, we did a survey of you all a couple of weeks ago. We asked you, when you think about which focus areas you want to support in the coming fiscal years, which ones matter enough, right? What are your top priorities? And these are the results. And they mirror pretty closely where the budget is for this current fiscal year, one session. So your top choice is resident well-being. Number two is educating capable community, all by fiber economy, all by environment and environmental distortion. And the reality is, the top two kind of lie relatively closely and the bottom two are also kind of lie relatively closely. Sure, support station. And if you compare this to the final one in the previous slide, it's just resident well-being, educating capable communities are correct. So with these slides, we want to start a conversation now before we get to the conversation about projects for this coming fiscal year. So the first question I have for you all is, when you look at these two slides and you think about your responses and your priorities, what surprises, what caught you off guard? What catches your attention off of this data? Does this feel, does it, does it feel right for the rest of the?
Resident well-being again.
The host name is the point, the fine print.
It's so broad.
So can you say?
I'm not able to feel good. The program's all over there.
Oh, resident well-being? Yeah, so resident well-being is predominantly your helping human services function. It's going to be a portion of libraries, a portion of recreation services. It's going to be mostly your emergency services.
Sheriff's office.
Sheriff's office. So if you think about it from strategic elements, you're really thinking about public safety, health and wellness, and cultural assets, and community assets. It's really what you're focused on. Educating capable is really very much focused on education. It's some element, again, of libraries and recreation services, which are right out there as well. Look at fiber economy. We're really looking at economic development. We're looking at elements of planning and premises inspections. When you look at energy and environmental distortion, you're looking at agricultural land use, air quality. You're looking at elements that are fine as well. So we'll we'll keep going, see if there's, yeah.
Educated and capable community, the community center broadband project, is that KRC? At Washington Regional Station, is that the best one?
Yes. All right. So I'll give everyone time to look at the strategic plan book like real quick. So what we'll do is we'll go ahead and move into the ranking elements. So what would be helpful is that you could go around the table and just if there's any projects you would really like to see included in this coming year fiscal year project, if you want to go ahead, kind of list them, say what they are. What we'll do is we'll then have you all write them. So we'll take notes, so you can take notes that you want, but we'll take notes so we can remind you of what the different projects are and it comes time for having a conversation. I don't know if you want to start, Tim?
Sorry, start. We're going to write them, right?
You want me to write them down, just say them, share them in the group? So everyone kind of knows what the projects are. And we're all, we're going to have each one individually kind of list them and we'll put them up so you can see as a group where you all are.
Okay, so you just want us to go around and just kind of, just talk about some of the, some of the projects or initiatives that were, uh, if you want to, if you want to cheer the board.
From this list or from?
From or some. That list or from your hearts?
Okay.
Not from your heart. Just use the list.
Turned it like a match.
Yeah.
Uh, you, your screen.
This is any projects that you want to see us expand, if I'm with expansion funding? So Asman, I know you're asking me, is this the time to talk? So if you already have.
This is the time to talk. That is right. Okay, I'm very excited.
So if you want to start.
Everyone can guess what I'm going to talk about, too. Okay, I'll kick us off. Okay, um, so I'd like to, and I invite Robert and Al to join in this. But just share some quick updates about our work with the Early Childhood Education Fund and then put a concrete proposal on the table about expansion of the fund and some next strategic steps. So just very quickly, just so thrilled with what's happened in the last two years since we launched the fund. We've now done two cycles of grant allocations. And at the bottom of page one of this doc, you'll see a little bit of the description of how the impact that's had, including creating two hundred and forty new slots. And also really just helping infuse our local system with, that's frankly very resource starved in a lot of ways, with resources, not just for essential projects like new classrooms, but also professional development, increasing teacher pay, addressing trauma needs of children and families. It's really been amazing. One issue that has come up since, since we launched the fund, Rusty talked about briefly, and I know several folks on commission are aware of, and it's something I'd like to see us address, is that as we transition from having very scattered funding for early childhood and pre-K initiatives that were happening through various budget lines into consolidating it under the fund, we got to that three point six million by counting eight hundred fifty one thousand dollars that's allocated to Ashville City Schools as part of our annual allocation and that they have for years and years and to their credit dedicated to their preschool program, which is one of the largest programs in the county. And we counted that towards a three point six. So my proposal I'm about to talk about with you all is that we actually take eight hundred fifty one thousand additional general fund dollars and add it to the fund to ensure that that's actually all new money that's going towards the expansion of early child education services and pre-K. And that the school system will continue to receive that eight hundred fifty one thousand. Hopefully it could be used for the preschool, but that we won't count it towards what fiscal year twenty twenty two will actually be a three point seven million dollar allocation of that two percent. So my, that's one piece of the proposal that I look for discussion. And then the second piece is that now that we have sort of two years of lessons learned, where we've taken this very generalist approach to funding a lot of different strategies in response to community input, that we actually sort of issue a charge to our early child education committee to reinforce some recommendations about how we can begin elevating the strategy of expanding high-quality pre-K slots. One, because we know that that's a highly impactful strategy and also because it will enable us to start to do some of the things we need to do to measure the impact of this work, including the launching like a longitudinal research study where we could see if a kiddo gets to do this high-quality pre-K, what does that mean for their kindergarten readiness and what does that mean for their third grade literacy? And then beyond, which are two of the goals we've identified in this strategic plan and really how we start to move from this, this slightly more generalist approach we've been taking into an approach that will really be tethered to the, to the rollout of the strategic plan. So those are the two problems of the proposal. And thankful to, thankful to Al and Robert and Admiral and Rachel Mygard and other staff for, and the committee, the whole committee for a lot of work on getting to a point where I think we're ready for that level of growth in the fund and also to begin to do that more targeted work around pre-Ks.
Awesome. Would anybody like to go next?
Would anybody like to go next?
Hello.
Go ahead, Sarah.
One of the things that I feel like we really increase, sorry, one of the things that I feel like we really increase ever is with the conservation. This has been one of the priorities, I'm really glad to see it in the strategic plan, but really what we've been doing is just a drop in the bucket to more capable. And it ends up impacting obviously the environmental stewardship, it'll impact our land use planning, climate change as far as carbon sequestration and diesel forms, fossil, which impacts the food. So it ties into a lot of different things, or, or the, even increasing overall quality of water and everything, and the local food. So it touches all these different areas, and I feel like there's, I know that there's a potential for the work to be done, but it's often there. And there's projects ready, so it's something that we have the capability of doing if we have the funding. And it's one of those things, too, that it's a, if we don't do it, it's going to be too late, is the reality. Party there to go ahead and make some efforts in that area, taking place back.
And one, what I would like to point out, it's what we're already working on, but the pandemic has really shown how bad we need broadband, you know, and all, not only out in the outline areas of the county, but even in, right in the city of Asheville. And with the virtual learning and all that's come up, and also I'm hearing from the medical community, this is a problem with telemedicine and all, we're having all kinds of problems because of that. And I think it's important that going forward, it's something we've been working on, we need to do anyway. But the pandemic has shown us, that's one of the soles it's pointed out. And the other is, another one, well, I could talk now, but I won't. But I'll start with two, is when you look at what's happened with jobs in, in the county, and what's going on, it points out to me that when we look at that bottom rung of people who being affected, we're going to have to do something about it, probably. And I think that goes hand in hand with education, with the community college and all. But we've got to make sure that we don't take our thumb off the post with this. And sure, we, I know we're getting some flack because of Pratt and Quinney, but we need good jobs. We've got to do that to improve life, without doubt. But that's something I think we really got to, we can't forget that.
That's a good segue into what I wanted to talk about, which really does fall within pulling our K-12 system into that pipeline of getting our students ready for those jobs that are coming, and bringing that multi-listening approach to K-12, to community college. And then once they're there, if they want to move on to that four-year degree, that opportunity is there. It feels like the systems are very disjointed, and as we look at potentially 800 new jobs. But then also just that general workforce development training component to increase the access to it for those folks who are currently on or underemployed. So it feels like it's kind of a bigger picture project. And the second thing that I do, I just want to reiterate is, we don't have a dollar a year, but really continuing to increase our investment in affordable housing, particularly based on information that we've heard today, that as housing costs increase, we know we have folks being evicted. How can we invest in solid, affordable housing for people being most impacted now? I said only had to, but I'm going to reiterate, comprehensive land, that's all I'm saying. That happens.
So I got four things, one of them was the comprehensive plan, so I'd like to say that out loud as well for next year. I guess, after that, starting with something I know not a whole lot about, which is the Mount Community Capital Fund. Sounds like an outstanding program to keep supporting. Affordable housing, again, through, through, not just dollars, but also, you know, regulatory improvements, I think we could work on to improve outcomes there. And then finally, reducing greenhouse gases through a lot of existing initiatives, like, you know, like renewables deployment, what we're doing at the, at the landfill, energy efficiency, there's more we could do with weatherization. And energy efficiency with, with the different utilities in the area. I started investigating the possibility of establishing a green bank for the county or region, to help us with all of the above. Those are the things in my, on my list in our.
I've been here, they all tend to take notes, so they're, so Green Bank is the last one.
Mr. Presley.
Yeah, what was I saying, Admiral?
Staffing, they're taking notes.
Right, so it's all kind of just.
Yeah, talk. That's no problem.
Whenever Admiral contacted me about, had turned in priorities, they, every one was a priority. That one of us needs your reality, but actually the whole cavalry. So with the early childcare, we, wow, the 3.6 million three years ago, and really didn't look at the 800,000. I think we need that, but I would like to go ahead and a little bit slower at 400,000 to get through what we are right now, because we've got so many other priorities here. Broadband, we have got to, that, that should be everyone's priority, in a sense, everyone of the priorities. But I think that one is one we don't talk about enough. And jobs, jobs will take care of affordable housing and early childcare down the road. Boy, have we took a big number in one of the biggest jobs this year that I still support it, I still want to continue bringing them in, lighting their bridges of early childhood of myself. You still only one parent had to work, you know, so it, it increased, you know, education because you was taught at home. It was, you knew what your child was doing because you had somebody watching. And I think that's what we got to get back to, so whenever I say a priority number one, I don't have any. I think what we're talking about today is every one of these ought to be priority. The land conservation, we have got to continue on that, so how much money have we got? Let's just make sure we spend it wisely and help everyone.
Alright, um, so things I would, you know, mention, you know, some of these things from work differently in the budget process, you know, like the schools and early childhood education, programs like that, core priorities. And when we spend money on them, there's all these public benefits, but it's also just money out the door, right? It's just making these investments. Other things, you know, we might invest in, it might actually save, like the, like the energy stuff, it's just like spending the money differently, like we got to keep lights on, we got to keep the, you know, heating and cooling going, and like the solar project that we plan on the public facilities. We spent money planning the process, like we spent staff time on it, we had some engineering consultants helping us. But then once we approved it, it's like, wow, it actually reduced our cost instead of increasing our cost. So, um, so, so some of the things I'm interested in, it's kind of more like investing in the planning and development phase, even though at the end of the day, they might actually reduce, reduce costs rather than increasing costs. But I do think in terms of the, you know, the climate and renewable arena, I mean, I'm really proud of what we've gotten done over the last couple of years, and projects that are underway. But I do think we're just going to need to kind of just further develop our capabilities here, right? Because it's such a big challenge, you know, we're trying to really change the way we use energy over, you know, really kind of relatively short period of time to be a, be a leader in that. And the folks we are working on it are great. But, um, you know, it's just a lot of work to do. So I, I think kind of investing in our developing greater capabilities, like that one, that one public, like that, that project on public facilities, we thought it would take like, we were like, hey, let's do an RFP. And then we're like, oh yeah, we'll release that in three or four months. Like it was, it was 18 months, right? It just took a long, so these projects are, you know, they take a lot of work and plan. That's a great project, but we need projects like that to be, you know, just become more commonplace, like we just need to do more work. So I'm, I'm interested in investing more in kind of building capacity.
Sounds like staff is the word you're looking for.
People need to pay to do work, that's right. So, so planning and development around renewables, I'm going to list that as a priority, capacity development, project planning. Another thing I'm really interested in, I mean, I'm really excited about everything we're doing in the pre-K, early childhood education's arena. You know, related to that, I, I'm very interested in what else we can be doing around really targeted strategies to address the achievement gap in our schools. I see, I see the early childhood education stuff as this really long-term investment we make. Like we invested in this today to change things five, 10, 20, you know, way into the future, these big returns, and totally for it. But I'm also interested in what, what else we can be doing to have really targeted strategies around the achievement gap. And, and, and those might be working with, you know, students in elementary school, middle school, high school. I mean, we know how big this, this, this problem is, and unfortunately, this is going to be one of these things that COVID is just going to like make so much worse. So I think it's not a new problem, but I think we just have to continue to look at this and maybe bring, you know, bring forth new ideas, or build on the things that are working and build it up, because we're not where we want to be, or even close to it right now. The I, I, I think, I think working on affordable housing, I'm, I'm certainly very supportive of that. And there's a lot of different pieces to that, but I'll just, at a high level, kind of also put that on, on the list. One of the things I'm kind of interested in looking at there, you know, the project we did with the teacher housing a couple of years ago, great project. We had, we had land, we got connected with some people who wanted to invest in the project, we built this. You know, it's a great project for people who were, who were in the, entering the education profession, to give them an affordable place to live. I think there's, I think there might be a lot more opportunities out there to do, to kind of leverage our public land assets. So I'd like to kind of think about the idea, maybe, maybe really kind of looking at all of our real estate assets that the county has, and maybe some of our partner organizations, too, that we work with, kind of start looking at. Because one of the biggest challenges that we have in the mountains, one of the biggest reasons, A is it's all these people moving from, you know, from California to New York, and thinking our housing is actually cheap, and we're like, oh, dust, that's really expensive. But the other is, it's just land, is, land is expensive, and land is, we love the mountains, but not all of our land is buildable. So where we can leverage land that we already own, I think that's something that might be a way to get work done, and if not pay a billion-dollar acre, just in case someone already has some of it. So those are some of my ideas.
I've got a couple more.
Okay. Round two.
Yeah, round two. So, so pre-K is my one, I think I've got two more, maybe more. One is I'd really love to, to, to keep doing work around some of the conversations we had this summer around the intersections of criminal justice and racial justice issues. And, and specifically, some of the conversations we started to have as we work on reducing the jail population, a lot of things happen, and one of the things that happened is that money is saved because it doesn't cost as much. So thinking about strategies for how we specifically reinvest the savings that are realized through that reduction. And, you know, there's been, I've heard Sheriff Miller express a lot of really interesting ideas around expanding access to mental health services, addiction-related services, ways to break those cycles of arrest and rearrest, arrest and rearrest. So would look forward to hearing, of course, the sheriff's office perspective and that, and also J-RACs and key, key community stakeholders. But, but that's one piece that, as we make progress towards that goal, making sure we're thinking a few steps ahead about what we do with, with that savings that comes from that. And then, you know, I was so impressed with the presentation around the equity plan that will be coming to us this spring. And I, and I just want to sort of put a pin in, in making sure we're thinking about how to resource that. Equity commitments are awesome, but when, but they need to be resourced to actually usually do the needles on things. And just, you know, that seems like it'll be coming to fruition as we're in the later stages of our budget cycle, but making sure we're kind of thinking that through. And then what, related to that, is just also thinking through the resolution we passed around co, or supporting the reparations commission. And that's certainly an area where there will need to be a fair amount of planning and facilitation around. Obviously, the city will be the lead entity, but just thinking about something that we made on paper, and how we will start to need to live into them in the coming budget year.
Thanks, you, and people, everyone gets to the fight at the apple here. Alright, what else, Terry?
Well, actually, it's already been said, and I will look in second, because and the end of the development, I agree, the reality is, we need this, we need this, we need this body of quality here, we need this pay jobs, and it's going to impact everything else, too. But I think everything, honestly, is important, so that's the hard thing, is how do we decide, because these are all.
Sounds like a piggyback on what you said, Brownie, about the achievement gap. I've got some serious concerns about the achievement gap, and I don't know how we do it, but we're going to have to get out of the box. Because I know I tick some people off when I say this, but the schools can't do it, they're not doing it. And so somehow, we're going to have to get behind them to see that it's done, because we've been talking about this for years, but we're not making any progress, we're retrogressive. And somebody even told me that in the city school system, they're thinking about redoing away with the DSEG order from the 70s, so they can create a segregated school for black kids. Now, come on, folks, I've been fighting all my life against that, and I will continue. But that's not the way to solve the problem. That's the way to get around it, to get away from it. But I think we've got to take the leadership, though, to bring some of this stuff in line, to see if it's going to get done. And sure, we're talking about issues that can't be done overnight, but darn, we got to start sometime. And I'm tired, it's like a treadmill, we're going around and around, and we're getting nowhere.
I think, to tie along to that as well, because of course, Commissioner Wise, I've served on the Nashville City Schools Equity Achievement Act Task Force, but as I listen to priorities for each of you, I think we can think outside the box, and think about how so many of these challenges, societal concerns that we're bringing forward, that we want to address, ultimately will start to improve the achievement gap. But we do have to commit to understanding that that's not a two- to three-year fix. This is a long-term fix to systemic challenges over hundreds of years. But we think about looking at our prenatal care, our healthcare of pregnant moms to small children, how that impacts educational performance, and how that ties back into our resolution about health as a part of our racism crisis. Early childhood, after-school care, that isn't anything that we've ever really discussed. And where those children go in those hours between school and parents finishing their jobs, and coming to pick them up, and how important that time is. So I, I have a lot of hope, I'll be, I'll be silent over here. I have a lot of hope, though, about how we can really tackle that achievement gap from a much broader perspective over the next several years. I think so many things just tied right back into the heart of that.
Are we, are we feeling pretty good about our list? Any last decisions?
Is that what you needed?
Well, I got the first problem, so now it's time to make decisions. We're providing guidance on decisions, so on that big piece, piece of paper, what would be really great is not leave them off. And I'll note that on a couple of them, you know, several people mentioned the achievement gap, but I tried to kind of dig out specific things I heard, to be a little more nuanced. I'll need to do this, if you go and rank them, I mean, every. I'll need to do this, if you go and rank them on every piece of paper, now, do you want them to rank all of them, or do you want to rank like a certain amount?
I don't think you could afford all of them. So if we can, if you want to rank them all and then give me the top three to top five, that would be awesome. So I know this is hard, so we would try to address as many of these as we possibly can. I think some of them we can, we can do that outside of here. If you have your top three to five, so let me go with five.
Okay. So I'll be there, we're expansion of early childhood fund, expansion at pre-K, expansion and conservation expense, expansion of broadband.
I hate to interrupt, but can I clarify one thing? Jasmine, were you, expansion of pre-K was not a new funding request?
Not new funding, that would just be us kind of charging the committee with coming back with recommendations for how we could do that in the coming...
The money is still just early childhood.
That's right, I'm sorry, I should give clarification.
So...
But I would like to get a green, or at some way discussion and a thumbs up or thumbs down on whether we can bring that charge to the committee.
We got early childhood fund, conservation investments, broadband, jobs, 512 room preparation, workforce development, affordable housing, comprehensive planning, community capital fund, reduction greenhouse emissions, typically our green base, planning and developing for its greater renewable energy capacity, reducing the achievement gap, leveraging county-owned property and land, reinvesting funds for jail savings into jail mental health provider, funding the Rachel Action Plan, funding some of the cost of the reparations task force, and increasing taxes for care. So those ones you on your piece of paper, unless you're top five and rank them in order, we'll then go and show it up there. No need for your name or anything, we're just going to make this anonymous after your score.
Can we, can we not call it reduced greenhouse gas emissions? Can we call it like climate protection for renewable energy?
Of course.
Because it just sounds like reduced greenhouse gas emissions, like I'm money this one.
Two, five, this is very good.
Yeah.
Now, now, a couple, couple clarifications that we're doing, is this for expenditure funds? This budget year or kind of looking ahead to the...
This is 2022.
Okay, for the, for the, for the budget we're going to go down in June, 12 months after that?
Yes.
Yeah. So this is for any expansion money, because of course you have your foundational, we're current, we have to do the debt and all that. But as we start looking at the new tax rate and setting those things and bringing recommendations around that, if there's excess funds, where will that money go? Trying to get priorities from you versus staff-led parties, wanting to be more board-driven, and then we can work on those. And if you wouldn't mind taking the comp plan out of the ranking, because we did talk about that for this year, our plan will be as, as our property tax comes in that we're supposed to talk about, we will bring that back to you this year. Comp plan, comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
Staff is working on that RFP now, so we can bring that to you come January or so to get that on the road. So that's not, it's for 2022.
Okay, and you're asking us to like list five things, not necessarily, or a, here's my first, second, third, but just list five things that you think are priorities, or you guys can sort of rank within the five.
If I have two dollars left over, where should it go first? Give me those depretes.
Second, the last item.
Yeah. It's like, it's like, uh, small business startups, like probably people with like startup funding for businesses or business expansion or independent business centers. Yeah.
I'm doing six.
No.
You can't say that out loud.
Only five. It was pretty sweet.
This happens to me all the time, I like pull up a hot rod, I like put it on my jacket. Yeah. Also, the jail savings one, it depends, it doesn't necessarily...
Yeah, tell me more about that.
Well, basically, if we have this large multiyear project, we do some yellow operations.
No worries, all good.
That time, solid space. Yeah, so...
We just don't have to hire more share.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Like, they're just a little bit of clay, they're just... Yeah, I would say we need staff, like, it's not like we need to pay like a million dollars a year. And like left it 10 years ago, it's like, what does that even do? What do you need to do?
Look at the results. So, um, there are a couple of breaking requirements. Um, sure, the top ranked ones were early childhood fund and affordable housing, which each had a vote from six votes, so six different people ranked it at the top five there, followed by broadband, jobs, re-rank, climate protection, which each had three. Now, planning and developing renewable energy capacity had two, so what you all kind of think about how we want to think about that.
But those are really the same thing, that should be five, for like renewable energy, climate protection are two different things. So I think we should combine those, the two and the three really go together. And what I think...
One was capacity building, though, and the other was actually the Green Bank.
So we got those, and then we get into the ones that have two votes, which were 512, pre-reparation, planning and developing renewable energy capacity, we just talked about that one. We're investing a bunch of jail savings, one person directly said jail savings, one person said jail. So I just went ahead and put the jails together, and then the Rachel Action Plan, and then the ones that had one vote were the easements, leveraging county-owned property and land for affordable housing, and the reparations task force. So...
Get the picture so we can... Prosperity.
Okay.
Is there another place to put the, for sure, the ones that got the six votes are top priorities, right?
Yeah, I mean, they seem to be, it seems to be that we have some clear top priorities, and then...
The ones that got three votes were the next, so if we can pull those out somehow.
Yeah, we'll pull them out, it's over about 10 dozen of that all now.
Cool.
So, sorry, so that, so the broad, broadly renewable energy and climate protection got five, right?
It is a five, yes.
Okay.
So, and I want to make sure we have clear guidance on what that means, because I was thinking one as more building capacity, the other was actual projects that are all climate protection. So if you're combining them, that number five, that, that becomes our second priority behind the one that got six. So can we clearly articulate what that means, if you're making that a second priority, or five votes for that?
Yeah, one was for me, one was for Brownie. I was just, I was just talking. I, I brought up, yeah, I mean, climate protection, I, I was including a lot of things under that without knowing the necessarily consequences of this.
The Green Bank is just like one idea, I mean, it's just...
Green Bank was one idea under the, the umbrella of...
Climate protection, right.
Yeah.
Okay, so not as much building staff capacity around it, but more around the umbrella of climate protection and what that means.
That's what I meant.
What you're thinking as well?
Well, look, these are all, like, all these different initiatives will have many different programs and facets, and, and I don't think we're asking them to break out all the different strategies. I think renewable energy and climate protection got five, that it should be recognized as... The strategies to be, you know, I mean, to be determined. It'll be, it won't be one thing, I mean, it'll be a number. As will affordable housing, right? As will early childhood education.
I don't know, do you have what you need?
Yeah, I guess so. Yeah, I'm going as renewable energy as my...
All right, well, I think that at this point, we're going to wrap up this portion of the agenda today. So thank you all so much.
Thank you. Thank you, it's great.
Thank you.
I think we can do a lot of this.
Yeah.
Yeah. We can do a lot of this.
There's a lot of like, one on spending items in there and stuff that aren't.
And all the money we're saving to very your place.
Yeah, yeah.
Reinvesting.
It's a, it's a promise that.
It's a promise. It should, it should be added as.
It's actually a negative vote. Like we're actually s- spending less money on it. But that should be a priority because of that, you know?
Exactly.
It's like.
We could do with the one, not capitalization.
I need to get.
Yeah.
So to just recap, we had early childhood, broadband, jobs.
I know. I know. I was following your lead, but you're, I'm just gonna talk about what I care about.
So our last topic of the day before any open discussion is our legislative agenda process. Tim?
So I know it's been kind of a long session, so I'll be brief for once, I promise. Um, we've got a few slides. In your debt. So the lead off to this would be, you know, we just talked about your priorities and talked about funding. Um, but it's probably obvious to you and everybody is that some of your priorities will only effectively move if there are changes that occur outside of our boundaries. But the reality is, Buncombe County Commissioners alone cannot use the needle on climate change, broadband, achievement gap, naming issue. And so there are certain areas where we're going to have to influence, uh, others to help us meet our priorities. So that's the whole point of the concept of a legislative agenda. And so I'll, I'll walk through kind of high level, but the reason we're talking about this is to move these priorities in a way that we, we can't necessarily do so on our own. So from the purpose, uh, again, we're trying to drive the county vision and goals. Uh, the, the, the drive and the movement that we're creating not only doesn't have a benefit here locally, but potentially to our other local governments and within the region. You know, if we make progress on early childhood credits, you know, that's something that benefits everybody, that sort of stuff. So we have. It's the strategic plan. We adopted a strategic plan that has specific goals, specific focus areas. So that would guide kind of the legislative agenda. So we can fit items into that. Our thought on this, this is our first time, so we're thinking we establish our first legislative agenda, then we'll go through a review cycle. Maybe, uh, on an annual basis to start, but then into a semi-annual process over time. What we're looking at the agenda, does it still meet the needs of the community? Has something changed that causes us to revise that agenda? Um, there's a tagline up here that I won't walk you through, but I think you know it. You know, the reality is Buncombe County is unique. We have specific needs here in Western Rhode Carolina. We're also a leader regionally and in the state and in the south on lots of different topics. And so we recognize that. But we also recognize we have specific interests. You know, our, our interests don't always align within the region or other places. And so we need to put our own message out there as it relates to legislative. So if we could go to our next slide, Russ. In terms of how we'd like to move forward, we've got a draft timeline. We can change this, but the basic idea is we're introducing this today. Um, in the April, May timeframe, we'd like to solicit input on ideas for the legislative agenda from y'all. Uh, do a working session with you similar to this, maybe we're whiteboarding just to get a sense of what that agenda looks like. Uh, but ultimately adopting an agenda next August, August, September timeframe. We won't talk about the exact date for that. Uh, from there, with the agenda in hand that's adopted, that's where the real work begins in sort of ongoing making the legislative agenda then to our sort of our local delegation that can involve capital visits. Uh, that can include other things like a lobbyist potentially down the road, but really just pushing the Buncombe agenda within roots. Um, that's what our process will look like. There's a, a diagram underneath, but what I'd like to do is spend a little bit of time talking about what legislative agenda items could look like. So that's on our next slide, Russ.
State and federal, is your vision?
Uh, I think we're thinking more state at this point, but you know, it's ultimately on, on the board to figure out how, how deep you want to lean into this. I would say we need to frame the agenda, as you know, in a way where it'll be well received by those that actually make decisions. So we have to sort of scope it in that sense. So a few items, we organize this around focus area on the left. And then for each focus area, we provided two items, just to give you a flavor. There's certainly more items in the world. But to give you an example, uh, for an educated and capable community, uh, the first item I listed here was increasing childcare subsidies. So this is something we know, we anticipate to have some benefit because we've dropped to a tier two, um, in the commerce rankings. But when we're back to a tier three, we're going to be facing those same subsidy issues that we're facing today. Um, in the parent medical, you'll see there's an acronym N C A C C. That's the Association of County Commissioners, and they have a goal on this, which is broader. But I wanted to show you that we're not alone in this goal. This is a goal that's shared by the Association of County Commissioners. Um, in the energy and environment space, um, I just gave a quick example here focused on the environment. Uh, this is something actually that came from our agricultural services group. And it's specifically about lowering the acreage amount for the present use value tax program. I'm not in the know on all the details on that particular topic, but that's an example. Uh, resident wellbeing, uh, this came from our Health and Human Services Department. I continue to protect access to sensitive child welfare or adult protective services data. Uh, so this is an item that has been a recent topic, but that was a priority there. Uh, in terms of the economy, uh, I'm a little biased, but there's many. Uh, for this purpose, I focused on broadband. Uh, clearly you know broadband is a need, but organizing funding at the state level so that we can actually use it and move the needle locally is a key interest to me. Um, in the equity space, I think there's a ton of work that could be done. Just a couple of examples here, and I think this needs more work, but. You know, thinking about the reparations resolution, um, maybe the need for small business development funds around hubs. So historically under, underutilized areas, uh, groups of people is an example. Uh, operational excellence, this could have gone a little differently, but what I brought from our election services group was provisions to the absentee ballot process to improve reliability of post-bone. And so this felt very timely given some of the conversations that we've had, but there's other areas operationally that we could talk about. Uh, resources, I took the easy road, Jennifer, and just said, address revenue shortfalls related to limited effects because I think that's a legislative item that will be pushed. So these are just examples. I'm sure you've already thought of a million more than what I presented here. Uh, but what we'd like to do is get you thinking about this, get that together in this format and think through what are the, what are the items of this commission that seems most important across these focus areas? And what do we want to push, uh, from a Buncombe perspective, from a regional perspective, uh, to help move the needle here locally in person? So that's my spiel. Um, if you have any questions, feel free to. Yeah, I, I made my own list, but I'm looking at your very last point on budget shortfall, just thinking back to your timeline. Um, and we should be careful and consider it with all this, but it just seems like it was taking twice as long as I would have thought to, to get to a finished product by next August.
So in terms of producing the agenda?
Yeah, in terms of asking for things like, you know, money related to budget shortfalls.
I think that's valid and broadband assistance.
Yes.
People need.
Items, I think are moving, um, forward anyway, but in terms of having, you know, the official adopted agenda. I think that's what we're tracking towards. Part of that is we're trying to fit into the existing legislative process and the other entities that are pulling things together. I'm always glad to try and move quicker, uh, with, with Admiral, so.
Session has started like February. Thank you, that's right, okay.
I, I know there's, there's healthy discussions going on right now, so that, that's something you could look at. Any other questions, thoughts?
I guess just the, what was your first?
I guess the first thing is really, is this something that the board want? This was a staff generated idea, but we wanted to bring it to you to see, is this something that we should be doing first? Once you enter that, then tell us.
If we have, if we have a legislative agenda, um, you know, like this, whatever else. The, um, what would we, I suppose, just like, what would we do with it? Um, I mean, in terms of like, how would we advocate for it? I mean, would that mostly be meeting with our legislative delegation and saying, hey, here's, here's some specific things we're hoping you're gonna work on? Of course, I mean, naturally I think they would be interested in.
What I like to jump on together.
Perspective on this. But I would, my sense is that, like, probably legislators from other parts of the state would be like, I don't care what. You know, like, so is it really about kind of a more deliberate engagement with our, with our delegation around these ideas? Or are there some other ideas for how my influence sit beyond that?
I'll jump in and then you guys. So as a member of the Mark and Honor Association of County Commissioners, they are a big lobbying group for us. And they're always asking from a local perspective, what is important to us? So yes, one would be talking about our delegation. But two would be making sure that our voice is heard at the state level. You have attended, maybe you've voted on their agendas before, but we've never been party to influencing that agenda. So that would be also another option as well. And that's a large 100 counties having the same issue, walking the halls.
So, so really engaging them to influence them to adopt some of our programs. That's great.
Yes.
I assume the way into the governor's office might care about as well.
That's, that's a great idea.
Yes.
It's all those things. And I, I think one thing we would add is that there's many local government entities that are currently doing things like this. Um, in terms of an agenda, some was lobbyists. Um, so in, in some ways, to be candid, we are maybe a step behind on that front, so.
So there might be, there might be different, like, specific, like, projects too, that, like, getting state funding specifically for projects in our area too. If we were really, you know, spending more time thinking about this, that might be another appropriation.
Adopted it as a board, it has a little bit more weight than individually what's important. So that's one of the reasons you want to talk about it. But just, we need to be playing in that space. We are a leader in the West. We are a leader in our state. A lot of people look to us. So I'd like to make sure that we are out front leading. So I got some thumbs up though.
Does anybody, does anybody, yeah? I think one of the questions will be, I think this is definitely where we're kind of putting together and adopting. Um, the question of whether to retain a lobbyist, and that's a financial investment, of course. Um, and so we took a good, kind of, one of those things, people like, I don't like that idea, you know, like. But many people will say, like, it's, it can be a very impactful investment to make in terms of, you know, if you want to get some of these things done, it can really make a difference. So I'm definitely open to that.
The city used to have one, do they have one currently?
They do.
And as, and as we work through our agenda, some of the items that is maybe not aligned with all the others of the state, and there's one thing that's release for Buncombe County, that's when you engage him to work on that specific issue for us. But I think first step would be to get the agenda to know what it is. And then talk to me what that would look like.
You know, the one, I'm trying to start brainstorming here, Stefan. Just the one thing that, you know, when you talk about this, this was a couple of years ago, and some of the commission members are, are not here anymore, but we, we were all in agreement on one idea that would be to make additional changes to like the homestead exemptions to provide proper tax relief to, you know, to lower income residence. I mean, um, to basically make the property taxes, which is the biggest tax people pay locally, a little bit less of a burden on people who are at least able to do it. So that would definitely be something I'd love to have on the list, uh, which would take statewide action.
Yes.
To do it, but maybe we could advocate.
And they came up with the deferred tax. I don't know if you remember, that was instituted and we pushed that for our people. But instead of messing with the homestead piece, they added this deferred tax for people that live in their homes.
Right.
So when they do die or leave, then the tax becomes due, but because it's something to the new person, not if you're living. So that's one that, so you got some relief on homestead, but they didn't mess with homestead, they added just the.
However you get there.
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right, Tim.
That's all I had. You'll hear, you'll hear more from us, but definitely if you think of items, feel free to share.
So let me just say one of the things about this, like, you know, one of the, this list looks, looks good. You know, for some of the new officials on the commission, like, we get asked sometimes to adopt resolutions about issues that are really like statewide issues or like national issues about, you know, any of the many issues of the, of the day that people have feelings about in our community. We have kind of an unwritten practice. I mean, it's not an adopted policy, but it's just sort of a tradition of not adopting resolutions, endorsing legislative initiatives unless they are really Buncombe County issues, like a uniquely Buncombe County issue. So, like, I think the state should expand that. I think the state should, you know, we all have a range of views about many different issues. But we tend to do not take up debating legislative issues unless they're really kind of unique of Buncombe County. So, um, I feel like especially if we're gonna actually kind of, um, choose to have a legislative agenda, I think we are probably gonna need to, as a body, formally make a decision about whether that past practice is how we want to continue dealing with it.
Yeah.
Um, and if we do do that, you know, people will ask you to support something and you'll be able to say, well, our county commission just doesn't do that. We just don't spend time, you know, on state national issues. We've tried to focus on what we're dealing with in Buncombe County. That response will be very, uh, people will think you're totally lame with that answer.
I already had a constituent ask me to add Medicaid to this list.
Yeah, right, right. Or, you know, if we decide, hey, we do want to have a voice on those issues, we could choose to do that. If we, if we do that, I think we would have to have some kind of process to limit, like, how we do that. Cause there's a million issues out there. And once Buncombe County, if we started adopting resolutions on hotbed issues, we people would just, everyone would come to us with their issue and say, please support my issue. So I think we would have to do something like maybe say, like, the, the idea I've had is like, maybe we would have one meeting. Like at one, one of our meetings a year, someone has an idea they want to put forward, you can bring it to that meeting, you can make your case and we can vote on it. But, but we're not like spending time at every single county commission meeting debating for hours issues that we have virtually no influence on and nobody really cares what we think. So, um, you know, instead of doing the business of the people coming up, so, uh, anyway, I just will share that cause it'll come up in the context of adopting some of the.
That's great. And we, we think this will help in a way. It will open the door, but having a process gives you a way to funnel uh, similar to what we've done with other items, requests for early childhood or other things. So funneling into kind of a, a central process that people help.
Right there. Thank you for this.
That's our agenda. You've got 30 whole minutes to talk about any discussion, any topics you want to talk about?
All right, so it's just kind of open.
Yep. Any topics from today or any guidance or any other?
The budget, like budget related instead of.
Open discussion. We called and.
All right, um.
Looking at, to see if there's any topics up. Is there any topics that fall for it? So in this kind of a setting, since we had a, the meeting advertised as a, Richard.
All members of the present sort of discuss anything.
Right, okay. Not actually, but discuss.
Well, are there, are there any items that we'd like to just, you know, spend more time on? These are really good. The staff did a great job, so first of all, let's just thank them.
They were, the same was very, you know, it was great. One thing that I was thinking about today that I asked Dr. Volbom to give more information on was um, more information about teacher supplements and how we fit into the state and, you know, more ways to look at that and analyze, you know, the history of teacher supplements in this county and across the state and how do we compare. I also asked him, he mentioned something, I forget the phrase he used, but county school staff that, um, that are paid for with county funds and are, are therefore not state employees, if I didn't know as a thing.
Local, locally.
Local, sure.
Okay.
Um, so the state doesn't always support a certain number of assistant teachers or a certain type of teacher and it's up to the local.
Okay.
The school board of employees, they're not Buncombe County employees. They're still hired and fired by the school board, but we just say, we give the money, the money to the schools to hire their people.
So, okay.
And then. And then this board has four.
If the state increases their, their employee salaries, then we have to increase.
You have to increase.
salaries.
And we have to pay a hundred percent. Uh, so it's, okay. And, and so the stat today was mentioned that it's 14% of the school's workforce, is that a pretty typical?
That I don't know, and I was trying to remember, I believe the number was like 117 was.
It was, yeah, it's over 100 employees, but I don't want the number off the top of my head, if Sam were here, he could tell us.
Do you know if that's a pretty average number for like a urban county?
I saw the tie, so I was gonna look into that, I wrote that as a.
Be interested in, uh, because it is a, it's a, it's kind of, it has an outside impact on the budget, because most positions the state pays for most of it, and then we might pay a little bit of supplement, but here we're paying the whole salary.
Right.
Yeah, I'd like to tag onto that supplemental piece, my understanding too is that, um, Asheville City Schools all employees get it. It's not just a teacher's supplement, so I'm understanding the difference between the two districts, and the supplements will be helpful.
Yeah. But see, Asheville City, you know, remember, they have that supplemental tax.
Right.
The, the other districts don't have, you know, the county.
That's true. Does that get allocated towards, how does that get allocated?
Well, it goes to whatever they need it for, like, give you a good example, when you look at assistant principals, all of their schools have assistant principals, even though the state only appays for maybe Asheville High and one at the middle school.
Yeah.
But they do that with local supplements.
Okay.
Or look at Asheville High, every class has its own council, they do that out of local supplements.
Okay.
Yes. And some of the teachers are paid for local supplement, yeah.
On the, um, kind of on that topic, on the, um, is it the $851,000?
Yes.
Um, so, so the city schools are spending $851,000 on early childhood pre-K programming on, out of their budget, and their, their budget has, you know, state funding, federal funding, county funding, and their supplemental funding. Uh, so, but in terms of what the county allocates to the city county schools, it's the same for per people or daily attendance number, wherever, right for this.
Yes, yes, because we don't count them for us, the 12 cents, I believe, the tax rate, we don't count that, as we just count what we give other general fund.
Yeah, so, so basically, like, when, when we develop the budget and we say to the county schools, okay, we're gonna be able to give you this much money, we give the same amount to the city schools on a per, per people basis. Right? So when the city schools do something like spend a bunch of money on early childhood education, good for them. Um, you know, then, I mean, go back to this question about what are they using supplemental funds for, what are they using other funds for? When I've asked city school officials that question in the past, there hasn't always been a super clear answer, and and not necessarily to their fault, because my sense is that, you know, they have these different revenue sources. Some of them are really earmarked, some of them, they have a degree of flexibility with how they use their funds. So at the end of the day, they just kind of have this pool of funds with several different sources of it, which they can then use to decide the different things they do. So like, a particular program that you said was not paid for by supplemental funding versus county funding, it might not be necessarily, uh, automatically, uh, delineated in that way. Um, is that yours?
That's what they'd be telling us to use.
Yeah.
But if you recall, Sam's example of Fund One and Fund Two, the two cannot mix, there's a fund for state money, there's a fund for local money, there's a fund for federal money. And so one program might have pieces of all of it, so we don't fully fund the program, but they should be able to tell me, where does my local money go?
That, so, so if, if we could do this budget cycle, really kind of in a friendly way, you know, kind of push on, like, we would like to, for your total budget, all of your expenses, we'd like to clearly understand the different revenue sources for them and how they, like, what each of the revenue sources is really paying. I've just never felt clear on that, so that would be, that'd be great, because it seems like something as significant as $850,000 for pre-K, like, since they're only getting the same amount of money per people from us as the county is, like, that would be a ton of money to figure out in your budget, considering all the other basic stuff that you have to pay for around a school, just like the county does, so.
Yeah.
It almost seems like it would have to come out of the supplemental funding to some extent. But that's.
So, so I wanna speak to one thing quickly around, I have to go back to look, but the per people contribution from local funds may not translate equally per people in Bunkham County schools to per people in Asheville City schools. Um, because, I think about that, but I don't think it translates exactly the same.
Okay.
So I definitely wanna bring that information back to you, uh, and then I think we have an opportunity, Asheville City Schools does have a new finance director, uh, and obviously the new superintendent, so I'd like to try to go back and us to really delve in with them around, because I know that friends have asked about the supplemental tax, what is it? So hopefully, in working with Georgia, we should be able to.
That'd be great, that'd be great. What else, what else do you figure out this afternoon?
I'd love to just get a temperature read, would it work for folks if, if we added to our January fifth briefing a discussion around that pre-K strategy issue for early childhood? The question on the table is sort of what direction we can give the early childhood committee as we head into this next phase of funding. Um, and I know it's been a long day of discussion so far, so would that work for folks if we discussed that in January?
Yeah.
I don't think it'll be super, well, we'll see if it's long, but I wanna make sure the full board is part of that conversation. Thank you. Can you guys probably talk about it, how does that impact, do you have some of those projects that were committed or? Yeah. Does, would it fall into that new prioritization, would it grant a lot of them if it didn't? Well, I mean, I, I think the timeline that we, we have discussed at the committee level is that it would be great to get some direction from the full board on how we start elevating some strategies. And pre-Ks may just sort of, sort of actually rise up to the top of the list. And then hopefully those recommendations could come back in the course of the spring and inform our work. Not in this grant cycle necessarily, but moving forward, if that makes sense. So it should, the, um, and the, the projects that have that multi-year piece probably would fit up in that one way or another.
Seems like there's a list of questions that I solved a bit.
You can have.
One thing I'd love to understand more about is, you know, I know over the last year, the county's funded some, uh, transit expansion in the community, and it's, what to understand at a high level, the history of county transit fundation, and the recent history as well. So I can wrap my head around that.
Uh, what, what is the, what is the timeline of the, that, 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 that?
So we must look a little bit, because May is working on this RFP right now and getting that cleaned up so we can bring it to the board to get that on the street by January.
It's like a partisan.
Yes, we, you know, that's not the RFP and ready, so you better.
And then what's the, sort of, timeline for?
It's about eight months.
Eighteen.
With that including the ordinance rewrites and stuff, or that's just, that's just the plan? A line?
So is it possible, if there are things we wanna do, considered that, we could do like an individual ordinance on, I mean, at least some, some types of things could be done along the way that doesn't really hurt the budget or the final option.
I think it can make a difference, the specifics. And I think, I'll just say to you that, that kind of, that's kind of first phase, I think it can be shortened, um, you know, because there's a entire, I think, the part that really takes a long time, just probably get put, making sure what's changing all parts of the county. And so, you know, we don't wanna lose anybody that's in that.
I don't like to insult the budget for that.
And that's the biggest driver of your budget as well, coming to those with you. But it just worked your work a little bit faster, because it's like zoom versus a face.
All right, any other questions, ideas before we call it a day? All right. Thank you all. I will, yeah, see you. Everybody, I think, I think we're good.